And we'll start off with a roll call. Cindy.
Thank you. Mayor Turley.
Present.
Gary Bravetto.
Present.
Bob Carlson.
Here.
Carol Harvey.
Here.
Ken Matthews.
Here.
John Schaefer.
Here.
Eric Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Geez, must be something going on. There's a big crowd here tonight. We should get this for all our meetings. You probably couldn't stand it. I'd like to begin tonight's meeting with item four on the agenda, if you have that, and that's our ceremonies, presentations, and appointments. And the first thing we're going to do tonight is hear from Debbie Miller, president of our local Chamber of Commerce. Welcome, Debbie.
Good evening, Mayor. Isn't it great what a crowd I brought out tonight? They came to hear the visitor center recap. I'm so excited about this. So, we're going to get started as long as this works properly.
Oh. Suzanne, do the rest.
Okay. Are we all okay? All right. Great. So Mayor and Council, thank you so much for having me out tonight to talk about our visitor center, the year-end recap, and we're going to try to get through this pretty painlessly. So, for the purpose of what we're going to talk about, we're talking about the fiscal year October 1st, 2012, through September 30th, 2013. I do have handouts for you all, but I've learned over my years, you wait to hand them out because otherwise you're flipping through those and hopefully you'll be able to see this all on screen. This is a new program called Prezi that we use, and it's a really cool program that you use, much like PowerPoint, only if you have the new iOS 7 system, it's supposed to fly to those screens. So we'll see how much-
Don't get me started about iOS 7 versus iOS 6.
Well, you and I-
I could probably talk for a while.
You and I probably agree on our issues with that. So, let's move on, talking about what is travel and tourism. I think it's important that I talk tonight a little bit about travel and tourism and where the spoke, the visitor center fits in. So moving on, we're going to talk a little bit about the dictionary description. It's traveling for pleasure, for business. It's providing lodging, entertainment, attractions, things like that. So, I'm somebody who really likes statistics. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about, we're going to start at the national level, then we're going to go to the state level, and then we're going to talk locally. Our national stats were provided by the U.S. Travel Association, and I'm not going to go through each one of them, but I am going to talk a little bit about the 1 in 8, American jobs are supported by the private sector, they're supported by travel and tourism. The other part of that is the direct travel spending, $813 billion. It's a billion-dollar industry, and we certainly want our slice of that pie. So moving on, one of the things that stood out to me, you know, thinking about my high school years, my college years, you know, how did I help support that? Well, it was in the leisure and hospitality industry. And you see, 1/3 of all part-time employees are furthering their education. The other component I wanted to talk about on this slide is that every 33 overseas travelers creates a new American job. That's going to fit into a slide that you're going to see upcoming here in a second. So let's move over to state tourism statistics. Each year, the Longwoods International Travel, Colorado Travel, puts together a year-long study, and it always comes out in the May of '13. Colorado continues to break records in terms of both visitor volume and overnight trips. In last year, we're up 2%. Look at our expenditures from Colorado's overnight visitors, $9.6 billion in just 2012. That's up 3% just from 2011. This slide, to me, is very important because when you look at the five main sectors that you're talking about, you're talking about business sectors such as retail, attraction, restaurants, lodging, transportation. We have all five of those here. So, for the purpose of understanding the statistics that we're going to talk about within the city of Woodland Park, our staff sat and put together these stats to help share with you what happened in our visitor center over this past year. The top five states for visitors. There's no surprise that the top state was Colorado. Our focus for the last three years has been on advertising, the vacations, the staycations, all the way from the Front Range, from Longmont, all the way down to Trinidad, even out to Park County. So, bringing those visitors in. Needless to say, we know the Texans are here, we know it's hot there, and so that's our second. Kansas, Missouri, and Oklahoma round that out. So we talked about international visitors. Here are some of the locations internationally that we had visitors from. Now, what's really fun is when they walk in and don't speak English. We've gotten really good at hand signals. Our volunteers are fabulous on figuring out what they mean, and, you know, they draw a house, or they draw something, we know it's lodging, things like that. So go back to my statistic earlier, 33 international visitors creates one American job. So it's important that we look at that as well. So, where do we get our phone inquiries from? There's a surprise here. Needless to say, Colorado's not a surprise, Missouri, Texas, or Kansas, but Florida is a surprise. It's the first time it's shown up in our statistics in the last eight years. And why we operate the visitor center, one of the other things that we do work with is relocation. We have something coming to our community that's going to open up in January called Caris Bible College, and a lot of their students come from the South, and a lot of those students come from Florida. We've had numerous calls this past year talking about housing, talking about relocation, what's here, employment, that type of thing. So Florida showed up in our statistics this year. Moving on, let's talk about the city of Woodland Park. Within the city limits, we have 95 rooms within our city, and that's where you draw the lodging tax from. Within the 95 rooms, that equates to 233 heads-to-beds. What's it look like for RV sites? We have 219 RV sites within, again, the city limits. So look at, let's look at regional. So when you look at Teller County, and these statistics you're going to see incorporate the statistics I just told you about. Cabins and rooms, 694 in the geographic area of Teller County. That's almost 3,000 people that we can put in cabins and rooms. So let's talk about our RV sites, 1,384. That's RV and tent sites, and that's a multitude of people. Certainly, you're probably looking 3, 4, 5, 6,000 people that you could put just in those sites alone. So let's connect the dots to what I talked about earlier as far as tourism, dollars spent, and how does that connect to us. The number of day trips, again, this is the state statistics, rose by 6% last year to 30.8 million. There was a significant improvement overall. You're looking at a total of $1.64 billion in the state, that's a 19% increase. And again, we've taken the effort over the last three years to focus on that and bring those people to our area. The five main sectors, we talked about it, we have them all here, and those were all impacted as well. So how do we know this? Thanks to Kelly Case in the City Finance Department, who provided me with these numbers. We're talking 11 months here. Now, this doesn't go through the end of September, but when you look at the significant increase of 6.5% in sales tax and the phenomenal increase of over 16% in lodging tax, you know that our advertising and our push for the vacations/staycations are working. So how does that fit within the visitor center? How does that fit within our mission and what we do? The fundamental mission of the visitor center is we try to strengthen the awareness of our location as a destination. When we do that, that stimulates the economy, that stimulates economic development as well. I can't tell you how many times we've heard visitors that have stopped by and came back to look for real estate, and the same thing with business owners, who've been here first as a visitor, and then they look to relocate a business. How does the visitor center accomplish all of this to be that special part of tourism for our area? Over the past three years, we've spent $90,000 on broadcast media, on TV, radio, print, internet advertising, focusing again on the vacation/staycation area. What are some of the other things we've done? You know, the last two years, we've had some challenges. Last year, certainly with the Waldo Canyon fire and the eight days of highway closure, that impacted us. We know it did, it impacted through the lodging and sales tax, we know that. But again, this year, when the Black Forest Fire hit, national news talked about Colorado Springs. One of the things that happened, people coming from Texas, from Oklahoma, from that area, they don't get the geographic region. So we get the calls of, "Did you burn up? Are you burned up? Are the trees burnt?" We answered all those questions and helped ease people's fears about what they'd find when they came to our area. Then, we had the flooding. For the most part, the flooding affected down the pass. Now, I'm not so sure that the city staff would tell me right now that it didn't affect here at City Hall. When you look at the construction going on, we had a little flooding up here in Woodland Park as well, but, you know, we tried to take a proactive stand when working with the media, when working with our businesses. Lodging facilities offered discounts off. Denny's, of course, is open 24 hours, they allowed people to come in, they had Wi-Fi available. And I think Mark Rebeau with Country Lodge had the best statement of all. What's one hour out of 23? And typically, for the most part, it may have been an hour, an hour and a half. So we took the positive stand in working with that and helping people figure out what they were going to do in regards to the pass being closed. What are some of the projects that we do in the visitor center? Our brochures are in all 10 visitor centers as you come into all corners of Colorado. We do our signature events posters, that goes out, talking about all of the signature events. We know the Symphony Above the Clouds, the Oktoberfest we just finished with, those such events. I'm going to skip over community calendar and come back to that in a second. Fam tours, familiarization tours. We get a school bus, we get locals, lodging owners, we get retail owners, we get our volunteers, we put them on a school bus, and we go out and visit what we have. The misconception that everybody knows everybody, it's just not true. But once you get them on a school bus, you get to see their facilities. This past year, we had the chance to go out to Stone Creek Farmstead, and it was, we got to pet the goats, it was really cool, we got to see them milking the goats, that type of thing. Those are things that we promote about our region. We went to the dinosaur center this year, and it was phenomenal. This was, I think, our third visit there, going through that. So we do that. Lodging binders, they're in every room in our area. So when somebody arrives, they sit down, where am I going to go eat? What am I going to do? It's there. We collect those every year, we refurbish those every year with new information. Every summer, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, we put what we call a whiteboard in our visitor center. I'm still amazed, the amount of people who travel and walk in and say, "I'm here, where am I going to stay?" We turn to our whiteboard, we work with all of our lodging facilities, we know who's pet-friendly, who has non-smoking rooms or smoking rooms, that type of thing. We push those people into our lodging facilities. I have 3.2 million website hits, but what I want you to know is that's actually exposures. So it's actually hit on the homepage, but they had to drill down for us to get that statistic. We rolled out a new website this year, it's all photo-friendly, so there's photos of the website, there's photo of the restaurants, there are meals types of thing. It's very iPad, iPhone-friendly, smartphone-friendly as well. Community calendar, it's second to none. Anyone can put any event on our community calendar, and we urge everybody to do that. So when people are looking for things to do, we have the community calendar to tell them about. We also developed for Parks and Rec here at the city, their own calendar. We developed a calendar for the library, and we're working on the school calendar. And that all flows in to our community calendar as well. Our volunteers put in 2,500 hours for us. These volunteers are outstanding. They're the first line, the people that they hear on the phone, the people that they see at the front desk, these are professional retired people who have come in, and they serve our community well, and they're very much our family, and we're very proud of them. So how does this impact the city and the visitor center contract that we have with you? So let's talk about the financial recap. Last year, we were awarded $38,390 to operate the visitor center. And it's a conjunction together with the chamber and what we do with our programs and projects. So just breaking this down quickly, you see the administrative costs, those are printing, that's mailing, that's creating the maps that we send out. It's helping people understand about altitude awareness. There's nothing like somebody from Kansas showing up, telling us they're going to hike the backside of the Crags that day, and they just got there. We sit down and have a little heart-to-heart with them about altitude and what might happen. We really work with our visitors so that they have a wonderful experience and they come back. Our advertising, we've talked about, our projects such as the lodging binder, the fam tour. We do do a volunteer appreciation, and we say thank you to them. I think that equates to about 20 cents an hour that we put toward that. We belong to tourism organizations so that we're on top of knowing what's going on in the industry and that we can also utilize their advertising opportunities. Our insurance, and then again, staffing. My assistant, Sue Griswold, is out in the audience today, and I can tell you, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, there's three of us out in that front area waiting on people, talking to people. So there is a part of staffing. Overall, operational cost comes to about $56,500. Again, you see the amount of the visitor center contract, and the chamber is more than happy to help supplement that operation as well. So how does that fit back to you? So, the next slide after this one, we're going to talk about the return on investment, and we're going to reference lodging, sales, and property tax. So what we do to do this, it's very, the impact is intangible, it's hard to touch, but we know that using the numbers from the 2013 budget that was projected last year, we have about a 39% impact on lodging. I actually, staff volunteers believe we have more, but I was conservative at 39%. That's about $35,000. We know we have the impact on sales tax because they ask us, "Where are they going to fuel? Where are they going to eat? We need to buy this. How are we going to do this? We need to get our flies for fishing," that sort of thing. It's about $142,000 impact there. And again, we talked about the relocation services that we work with, visitors for many years who come back. Total impact, $185,000 that we believe that the visitor center has on the bottom line of revenues coming into the city. That's a $4.84 return on investment. We are extremely proud of what we do for this and how we work together with the city and with the region to promote our region. I've gone through this really quickly, but I want to say thank you for allowing us to do this over the past year. I know I have several of my board members out there, I know Neil's there, Tanner's back there, Marilyn's back there, and Jim's with us as well here tonight, and I'd open up for any questions, if you have any questions, but we've had a good year.
Well, I think we've all had a good year, and considering everything and recovering from last year, and it's been a beautiful summer, and a little bit wet in July and August, but September, but considering everything that that causes as far as problems, it's been a good thing. I'd just like to say that I appreciate, you know, what the chamber does, and the members, and the board, and the role that you play in the community, and both working with the businesses, as well as many of the training things that the chamber brings to the community, and opportunities for folks like myself to come and speak with them at different times, and I really appreciate that. Any comments from members of council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. So how was the overall on Oktoberfest?
Oktoberfest, we had a great Oktoberfest. We were almost at 5,000 attendance. It's the first year I've ever had to do this, but about 20 after 3, I was on the phone with the airport. We were looking at the radar, and we were seeing two different fronts coming in, and guess where they were going to collide? Right over us. I didn't want to see headlines, I knew Norma wouldn't do this to me, or Rick, but, you know, chamber kills people with lightning, we didn't want to do that. So at 3:30 on Sunday, we actually shut the event down. The vendors were putting the last things in their vehicles when the lightning and the rain hit, so we timed it well. It was a good Oktoberfest, so-
Saturday was gorgeous that-
Saturday was wonderful. And Mayor, you did a great job tapping that can-
I know, I think when I tapped that, I think Gary, I think he was holding the tap, and I was using the hammer, and he still has his hands.
Well, my thumb is a great-
So, thanks, Debbie.
Thank you.
So moving right along, item five is additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda, and I believe we do not have any, is that correct, Cindy?
That's correct.
And we'll now move on to consent calendar, and we have two items for that, and for that, it is our city clerk, Cindy Morris.
Thank you. There's two items on your consent calendar this evening. The first is the approval of the minutes from the September 19th regular meeting, and the second is approval for the contract with Anderson Construction Company for the repair and replacement of the foundation at the U.P.A. Historical Society Museum located in History Park. What questions may we answer?
Counsel, any questions for Cindy?
I have a question.
Yes, John.
On that UP HS project-
Yes.
-that you have a revolving loan fund for that, for financing?
The museum project is included in the revolving loan fund for the amount of $35,000.
Okay, so the contract exceeds the $35,000.
Right.
Is that simply a matter of moving other funds into the RLF, and if so, where do they come from?
Bill will answer that.
Well, we did have some cost savings on some other projects that were in the RLF this year, and so we'll be able to realize some of those savings.
Correct.
As well as any change orders that come along.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar?
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Thank you. Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And we have no unfinished business, we have no ordinance on initial posting. We do have two public hearings. Item 9A is an application from Gold Hill Theaters, and for that, I'm going to turn to Cindy Morris.
Thank you. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce you, the applicants for this liquor license, Gold Hill Liquors LLC, Ed Shirk-
Good morning.
... and Bill Page. This business is the Gold Hill Theaters complex in the Gold Hill North. There recently has been a renovation, and I've passed out a map for each of you to see, so that you can see the layout and configuration of the theater complex today. The applicant does not hold any other liquor license, and the possession of the property is documented by a lease through January of 2022. Factual findings are listed there for you. The property was posted with the required public notice sign and the notice in the Pike's Peak Courier-View. All applicable fees have been paid, and since this is a new license, recall that the needs and desires of the neighborhood need to be researched and submitted. And what that includes is finding folks that are in support of the granting of this license, as well as advertising for people who may not be in support, for them to file their petitions with the city's clerk. So we do have, from the petitioners, we do have their petition. It contained 30 names of residents within the city of Woodland Park over the age of 21 who support the granting of the license. We received no negative comment or petitions. The map that I wanted you to see, I highlighted in yellow the area for service, and I wanted to point out that I thought this is a pretty unique situation. You see that that area is separate and apart from the concession stand, so that alcoholic beverages can be purchased separately from sodas and popcorn and candy, and alcoholic drinks will not be generally served for features that are rated G or children's movies. And I believe Mr. Shirk will talk to you a little bit about that. I wanted to point that out to you because I think that's kind of unique. So, I have no other comments. Our recommendation, based on the application packet, is to recommend approval following the public hearing, and would ask if you give Mr. Shirk a chance to address you, and maybe-
Please come forward.
... any questions you may have.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Edward A. Shirk, 1339 West Midland Avenue, Woodland Park, Colorado. Yes, thank you, counsel, for the opportunity to address you. I also want to give thanks to the city clerk's office for your help, Cindy and Suzanne. Thank you very much for your help in this process. Brand-new experience for me. I also wanted to thank the city for the constant feeling of support for the theater, my involvement over the last three years. I've felt tremendous support from not only people from the city council, but also from our patrons as well, and I really have appreciated that. It's really been a pleasure to be part of an organization that's loved so well as Gold Hill Theaters. Our interest in getting a wine and beer license as Gold Hill Theaters comes from three places, really. We've had lots of encouragement from our patrons. They're aware of other facilities like this around the country that do what we are trying to do, and they have the opportunity to purchase wine and beer, and they have encouraged us to that. One of the other things that we have in mind to do is to participate with our neighbors, Carmen, the Tapas Grill and Bar, in serving food in the theater, and it was recommended that we also then pursue a wine and beer license to complement that. Overall, Gold Hill Theaters is a business, and over the last few years, many of you know, the expenditure for digital conversion has happened throughout the country, throughout the world, really. In fact, September 2013 is supposed to be the end of 35-millimeter film. So the theater has had to expend a huge investment to get converted to digital theater. And so we are, we're a business, and we're trying to work in any way we can to try to improve our sustainability over the next years. We love being a community theater, and we feel the support of our community, and we want to keep it going. With respect to alcohol in the theater, we recognize that it is a tough situation in the sense that there are, we have films where children are present, and we have adult-oriented films. And so the hard part will be in trying to strike that line of not being offensive to families who want to be in there with their children, and also providing for adults. And so we've set up policies that will help to keep that separate, so that when there are PG and G-rated films playing, that the wine and beer facilities are as inconspicuous as possible, and that there isn't a chance for crisscross there. We also have implemented a policy of two-drink max, and so that we don't get things out of place. Staff will be trained on observing people as they come in, so that we can do a good job with them, which, of course, we would want to do. With that, I would be happy to entertain any questions.
Counsel, do you have some questions for the applicant?
Well, my first question-
Chair, please.
-my first question was, will your server be tip-trained?
Yes, this is the, Suzanne and I talked to Ed a little bit about this. This is the complimentary free-of-charge program that the police department-
Oh, right.
-gives each of the employees as it relates to alcohol service.
We are, we have a staff change- We are, we have a staff change coming, and once that change has happened, then we'll, we will go ahead and participate in that, of course.
And my second question was, are you aware of any of the theaters in Colorado Springs or any of the surrounding towns that serve alcohol as well?
Right. The Kimball Theater in the Springs serves, has a full bar. They serve hard liquor as well. We didn't want to participate in that. And I didn't want to become a bartender, really. And, and I am in conversation with them as well. And there are a number of facilities in Denver that do the same thing.
Thank you.
Other questions from counsel? So I just want to make sure I have an understanding. So the alcohol will be sold in the area that says adult drinks, in which in the drawing Cindy highlighted in yellow for us. So they will buy, purchase the drinks there, and they'll be able to take those into the theaters during the movies and such?
That's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure I understood that.
Yeah, there will be no consuming alcohol in the lobby.
Okay.
Ed, if I could ask you a quick.
Yes, please.
About the food service, how is that gonna be handled? Are they waitressing into the theater, or they buy it before they come in? Or just curious how that works?
Well, the details have to be worked out completely. But what, in, in my discussions with Carmen and Carlos, our intention will be to have a special menu at the concession stand in the theater, and where they will be, patrons will be able to order.
I see.
And so we will place the order with Carmen. They'll bring it to us, and we'll deliver it then into the, into the theater. That's what we think now. There might be an easier way to do that, but I, a limited menu, and then sometime there might be special events, dinner and movie nights, or things like that, that would be more extensive in terms of the meals.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Carol.
Chief Larson, do you have any comments on this?
No.
No concern. Thank you.
And I guess this is probably kind of naive on my part, but I'll ask it anyway. So there's no issue with, I guess I'd ask this probably to the chief, selling alcohol and then it being served, and then being in areas where there's minors and such things?
It wouldn't be any different than a restaurant.
Yeah, okay.
So, for instance, if you go to lunch at Denny's.
Right.
And people have a beer or liquor to their table.
Okay, just want to make sure for the record.
Sure. The way it works is it depends on the map of the serving area in the liquor license.
Okay.
Cindy, you can explain that better than I can.
Okay.
The dark line in the map that you see allows service at any one of the seating areas within the dark line.
Okay.
So that they can go into any of the theaters.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions from counsel at this time for the applicant? Hearing none, then I'll open the floor to a public comment. Anyone can public comment. Terry, did you wanna, Terry Harrison, did you want to speak on this item?
I'm all for it, and I'll come to the podium.
Come to the podium, I saw your name. You were signed up, so I want to give you the opportunity. Former Councilman Harrison. You enjoying it out there instead of up here?
Hey, you know what? And you can hear out here.
You know what? And they never have any trouble hearing me, anyway.
Okay, Aaron, keep an eye on me, because if I'm gonna mess up, keep me out of jail. I just wanted to speak on Ed's behalf. Actually, I got to meet Ed about two years before, or worked for Ed two years before I ever met him. Ed was, was.
In London?
Yeah. And contacted me via email, and I did quite a bit of work for him. Also, I think Ken, when Jim Bergman built the house, I think Councilman Matthews at the time supplied the home. And it's great. But I did want to speak on Ed's character and let you know, I really think it's a great idea, and I think it's growing trend. And I, I would kind of feel bad if, if we, as, as you, if you could get a haircut and have a beer, and you couldn't go to a movie and have one, it wouldn't make a lot of sense to me. And I know that we're getting a lot more facilities that are serving alcohol in this manner. And as far as the theater itself, any of you that haven't been to the theater, you need to go. And, and over the past year, I've watched it grow from two theaters, two theaters, to three theaters. And now it's back to two, because the remodel has started on, on the last. And so we will actually have four screens at the theater. And, and you know, my wife and I love to go to the movie now. We probably go once, sometimes twice a week. The movies are great. The sound system's fantastic. And for those of you that, this really sounds funny coming from me, but, but for those of you that, that would like to enjoy a glass of wine or a beer while at the movie and eating your popcorn, or, or having a meal from Carmen's, I think you ought to be allowed to. So with that, I'll go sit down.
Okay. Anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Hearing none, I'll close the public comment. Counsel, have any final questions?
I'd make a motion to approve the application for the liquor license for Gold Hill Theaters.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further deliberation, discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote, Cindy.
Thank you. Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all very much. I will make one comment now, that many, many years ago, in London, if you go to London, and I heard of London mentioned, theaters, movie theaters there all have alcohol and, and foods and everything. So I mean, years and years ago, when I went to theaters in London, I rather enjoyed it. I was just a young Air Force person at that time, and enjoyed that. So anyway, thank you very much. Appreciate what you're doing in the community. We'll move on to item 9B, and that's a liquor license transfer for Wild Wings and Things. And for that, we'll turn to Cindy also.
Thank you. I don't believe our applicants are present tonight. Are the Laurenses here? Okay. We expected them to come. Perhaps something has come up. This is an application to transfer the liquor license. It's hotel/restaurant liquor license, which is full-service, that is currently active at the Wild Wings and Things store, restaurant, and store down in the Safeway Shopping Center. The Dodson, the couple that, Lois Dodson Laurens, will be the primary owner with her LDL Limited Corporation. She and her husband are currently living in Fountain, looking to relocate here in Woodland Park, and have purchased the business, and would like to apply to have the license transferred into their name. They do have a lease with the current owner, Jeremy Fortin. All of the required documents have been submitted. The property was posted. And the fingerprint reports have been submitted to the CBI with no negative history expected. Recall that an existing license doesn't require any signatures or petitions, because it's already been reviewed, and we're simply changing ownership. So, it would be the staff's recommendation, following the public hearing, to approve the application contingent upon the receipt of favorable CBI fingerprint reports. What questions may I answer?
Any questions for Cindy?
How long does it take to get a CBI report?
It usually takes anywhere from 10 to 14 days. This was submitted about a week ago. So it should be very soon.
Any other questions? Hearing none, then I'll open the floor for any public comment. If you have any comments, please come forward now. Hearing none, I'll close the public comment. Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Take a vote.
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And I will read something into the record now that I normally do at the beginning. But it's for the record, and just for everyone here that knows, you're in the council meeting, you'll see council members using electronic devices, such as this, to access materials relevant to the public hearings before us. Be assured that it's the common practice of this city council, that these devices are not being used for any texting, emailing, or other communications during public hearings. And just, if you don't know what that means, it's so, you know, in fact, that the, on any public hearings, and there's issues, the information that we use to base our decision is things that are presented at the meeting, and that we're not receiving any outside communications from individuals relative to those. So just wanted to always read that into the record, and wanted to make sure we got that in for tonight. And now we'll move on to item 10A, new business. And the first item is a request from the Pike's Peak Regional Medical Center Association to renew and extend their utility reimbursement agreement. And for that, I'm gonna ask Kurt Grenner to come forward, please. Welcome Kurt.
Thank you. Good evening. I guess I'm supposed to tell my name and address, a second?
Absolutely.
My name is Kurt Grenner. I'm here as president of the Pike's Peak Regional Hospital Association. I live at 216 Patricia Point, Woodland Park. Thank you for the opportunity to look at this thing real quickly. You can kind of pace me, because I'm not gonna, I'm not planning to spend a lot of time. I'll be happy to answer questions. I'll give you just a really quick background on what this is about for some people who may never even have heard of it. First of all, who is asking? Who is asking is the charitable, charitable organization under IRS rules known as the Pike's Peak Regional Medical Center Association. That's a, an organization that's 15 years old now. Its, its mission has been and is to promote economic development and quality of life in our community by supporting programs that enhance the health delivery to our citizens, and health of our citizens. In terms of our standing in this, we have, we are the authors of all the plans that have gone into the medical center and management of all those projects. In the last, the hospital, which is the centerpiece of that project, celebrated its sixth year of operation last, last week on the 1st of October. It's been extraordinarily successful. It's contributing about an $18 million payroll to the community, and overall employs about 250 very high-quality, very sustainable jobs. Why the request? When the hospital was, the first project, the first building in this project was the hospital, when we did that, we didn't have water or sewer on the campus. And so we had to arrange a way to do that. So the association paid for the develop, the capital development of water and sewer service as an extension from the city to the campus. We paid the entire bill for that, which is, I guess, together was probably $700 and some thousand dollars. A portion of that was, was the water. And part of the, I mean, the sewer, but the part of the deal at the time was that we would be, we'd be eligible, we, the association, would be eligible for reimbursement of those costs as additional users hooked up to the facility that we paid to install. And so that has, one increment has, of that has already happened with the ROMAC facilities, and that we anticipate others will come. However, because of the time delay that's involved with the economy and so on, this has taken longer than we probably thought at the beginning. The city code allows for the extension of these agreements for an additional five years, and we're asking for that five-year extension. Keep in mind that this is a reimbursement that has no cost to the city. That is, it's reimbursing funds that we have paid. It's not a payment, or a grant, or a gift from the city, or the county, or anybody else. It's simply reimbursement for the funds that we've already contributed, and it's for five years. Has very clear terms as to how that money is made available. And we expect that it probably will be over the next few years. That's why it's especially important. One thing that people might want to ask for, ask is, what are we gonna do with the money? Nobody ever, nobody ever has a trouble getting rid of money these days, do they? But we especially are very sensitive to the need for this thing right now, especially sensitive, because we had a, kind of a surprise. It probably shouldn't have been a surprise. But we, we realized a requirement to do a major enhancement to the water infrastructure on the campus. And we're gonna have to add about $370,000 in new capital expenditures on the campus before anything else can be done on the campus. In other words, no new buildings, no expansion of buildings, no new infrastructure or capital development can be done on that campus until this water infrastructure is, is in place. This has been a difficult process to, to go through and plan. The good news is, it's all planned. Engineering is done. We understand it. I want to acknowledge just phenomenal help from David Butterey, and Kip Wiley, and Tyler Lambert, who we could not have done this without. Actually, truth be told, I think they did it with our help instead of the other way around. But that's a $370,000 bill that's on, on, on the, on the table right now. And so that, plus our, our ongoing mission, the association remains very busy. A lot of the things that we do are probably not obvious to a lot of people until there's suddenly a new building there. We're pretty busy. You saw in the last couple of years, we made an investment of another $500,000 in landscaping, including hardscaping on the campus, where you see the big sign and the lights, and, and work on the roads and that sort of thing. That was done at association expense, solely at association expense, in order to enhance the, the quality of experience of visiting the, the campus, and of course, its viability as a, as a commercial site for the businesses there. We took a, the association took a very active role in the, in the recruitment of Kaiser Permanente as a, as a contractor for the hospital. They had refused, they had refused to work with the hospital for five and a half years. And so we took that on as a project to make sure that they, they came around and started working with the hospital. That was successful. It would not have been successful without the, the help, actually the leadership of Jed Bowman at the, at the superintendent of the RE2 School District, which is the major Kaiser customer, that allowed us to apply the hammer and make that happen. There's a lot more. There are seven total projects planned for that campus. Two have been done, and the, one is about to have the trigger pulled on it. And so that leaves, what is that, seven minus three, twelve more?
I'm gonna interrupt you for a second.
Well, I'm done, but okay.
I'd like to hear about all of that, but maybe at a different meeting?
Yeah.
So you know, I'd like to stick with the facts that as pertains to this decision tonight.
Well, you interrupted after my last sentence. I'm finished.
Okay. Kurt and I are friends, and we know, we know how each other are. He has a nickname for me sometimes.
No, that's not true.
But we don't even share them.
Anyway, if there's any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer, but it seems pretty straightforward.
I would just, you know, just for clarification, David Butterey and I got together earlier this week, and, and you know, kind of reviewed all this, and the history of the campus out there, and all the water and sewer and all that stuff. I just wanted to get a understanding of all the agreements and, and everything that was done in the past relative to the whole campus and, and the providing of water and sewer. So I came to a pretty good understanding of that. This reimbursement, it's a reimbursement from any entities that build out there and want to, and want to hook on.
That's correct.
So that's who does the reimbursement. And it is just the renewal of the agreement that's already been in place. Actually, the term is extension, so, because it doesn't change any terms. Yeah. Okay. Yes, Bob?
Yeah, as a long-term Kaiser Permanente member, when I moved here.
Yeah.
Didn't take them.
Right.
I was quite upset, because I like to support local businesses, and especially a hospital nearby. And so every year, I would go down to the Kaiser Permanente office down there and talk to the people that were responsible for negotiating these things. And it, from what I hear, it wasn't them that didn't want to do this. They had certain arrangements with some hospitals downtown. So anyway, we'll leave that aside. Anyway, I'm glad you were able to do it, and I hope to be able to frequent your establishment.
Well, I hope you don't have to frequent it, but I, but I hope that when the need arises, that you do.
So again, this seems pretty straightforward. It seems like a fair thing to do, and I have no other questions.
Any questions from counsel? Yes, John. When the original agreement was signed in December of 2003, reimbursement is.
When the original agreement was signed in December of 2003, reimbursement schedule was based on a lot of forecasted numbers and usages. Now, we have 10 years' worth of data. Will you be redoing any of that agreement that might result in you're getting reimbursed more quickly?
No, the trigger for reimbursement is events where additional users tap on to the existing line. So, it's not based on a formula. It's based on an event, and so, we can't speed it up. In other words, it happens when somebody hooks on.
All right.
And none of the formulas for, none of the formulas for the amount of reimbursement will be changed. I don't think there's any, there really be no legal provision to do that, and there's no need to do that. The forecasts at the time were pretty accurate with, the only problem being it's taking 15 years to get all this done instead of 10, but that's not a surprise these days.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, comments from council? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion. Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? Then we'll take a vote.
Thank you. What that will mean is, in the staff report, we talk about a resolution confirming this, and we'll have that at your October 17th meeting.
Okay.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for your support.
Thanks, Kurt. Appreciate you and what all you've done and all that wonderful things out there. I'll agree with Bob. I have Kaiser also, so I'm pretty pleased. So, we'll move on to item 10B, which is the Woodland Aquatic Project, consideration of resolution number 761. Before we move on, I'd like to just maybe have a little bit of a discussion amongst council as to how we want to proceed on this. We have, normally on resolutions, we don't have public comment. We have someone that comes, can present something. It might be an individual, an organization. It might be a council member that presents, and we normally do not take public comment. This is, as you all know, is something that a lot of people in the community have wanted to see happen for a long time. Although I, at times, have been against certain ways of doing things, am really wanting to see this happen also. We have approximately 20 people signed up, and I don't know if they're pro, con, whatever, but about 20 individuals that would like to speak tonight, and I'd just like to see what council thinks about entertaining- It's an awful long time, guy. -some public comment. Well, I mean, one approach I would say we could do with this is Jerry Simon, who heads the Woodland Aquatic Project, is going to speak to us. We got a read ahead today on his briefing. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it or not. I did. So, we have that, and Jerry will speak. I don't want to, myself, since I'm speaking, I don't want to necessarily hear the same thing over and over and over from 20 people. I mean, I think Jerry will tell us, and we can, I mean, I think there's a, you know, maybe a consensus on, you know, that it's a goodness and everything on the project. Issues really come down to funding issues. And, but at the same time, whether it's pro or con, I personally would like to see us give some time to people to speak, and if it's something that's already been said, I would just make a suggestion. They could come, they could state their name and address for the record and say they agree or disagree, and we move on. But, it would allow them to be on the record as to how they see it. That's just a suggestion. I'm open for discussion from council. Are you going to limit it to a certain amount of time? Oh, absolutely. Because 20 is a lot of people. Absolutely. Normally, it would be five minutes. I would actually, other than Jerry, would suggest three. It's still a long time. If we had 20 people speak, that would be 60 minutes. I don't know what they're going to speak about. I mean, I think many of us up here are in support of an aquatic center. The issue is, at what cost? Yeah, absolutely. How do we fund it? So, it's not a question that anybody's against it. Well, but that being said, there might be somebody that comes and speaks to a funding thing. I just, I'd like to give the public, this is me, I'd like to see them have an opportunity to come, speak on the record. It doesn't go on to 2:00. Okay. Well, no.
I agree, Mr. Mayor, and what I would propose is that we allow Mr. Simon to speak, and then following Mr. Simon, we allow no more than 60 minutes.
Council? Yes, Bob?
Yeah. We're cognizant of that concern, and we're pleased that-
We, who?
We, the-
Council?
The council.
Okay.
You expressed the concern.
Well, and just so everybody will know, the reason I ask that is Bob is also on the Woodland Aquatic Project Board, and I just want to make sure we've had this in the past with, not just this issue, but others, that when a council member speaks, it's real important for us to know if they're speaking, you know, what hat they're wearing when they speak. So, if you see me ask that, it's just for clarification purposes, so I know who the individual is representing.
I personally, on the council, share your concern, and so, would go with a three to five minutes per person, not 60 seconds.
No, 60 minutes total.
Oh, 60 minutes. Okay. Fine, thanks. Yeah, and I think that would be possible.
To include Mr. Simon's presentation, if we could decide soon, we could get this started.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we'll have to see how it goes.
Well, no, we're actually going to determine that right now, the length of time. This is a council decision on how we're going to proceed. It's a procedural matter.
Right.
And so, I've heard, any other comments from council? Yes, John?
This might be a question for Aaron. If people have signed to speak, do we not have the obligation to allow them to speak unless they withdraw their comments or their desire to speak?
No, there's no, there's no requirement, as the mayor points out with respect to our resolution.
And the normal is that we allow people who want to speak to speak at the end of the meeting. But, I want to bring it in at this time.
I agree with Carol. I think we should just get started.
Okay.
I would just, I mean, to me, the most important question that I want to, or comment I want to hear from people are, are they for it? Are they against it? Why? And, you know, exactly.
I agree. I need a nod of heads. You know, you want to proceed with that, Chair? Okay? Then, in that case, you know what we're going to be doing, and so, we're going to, we're going to actually run and accept public comments to a maximum of nine o'clock and approximately. And if, again, I would ask anybody who's on speaking, if someone has already covered those points, to make your statement and move on and let others have an opportunity to speak. I think that would be good for everybody. Welcome, Jerry. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jerry Simon, 365 Sun Court, Woodland Park. Been a resident for 25 years. And I am the president of the Woodland Aquatic Project. Thanks, everybody, for showing up for the visitor center discussion. Good to see you here. I'm going to go as quick as I can, so, we've got some people here, folks, that don't normally come to city council meetings, some high school students, some other folks that, I think this is a great opportunity for them to see government in action, and I hope they get a good hearing. I love this picture. This picture of Norman Rockwell. It's titled "Boy on a High Dive."
And Jerry, if you would, we talked a little bit earlier. Can we turn the lights back up for one second? And I would actually like for you to introduce, you're here speaking for the WAP team.
I'm going to do that. I'm going to do that right after this.
Okay.
I love this picture. Norman Rockwell picture, "Boy on a High Dive." I love it for a couple of reasons. One, this perfectly portrays where Woodland Park is with respect to the aquatics project. We've been talking about it as long as I've been here, and we're just like this little boy up here, full of fear, uncertainty, and doubt, wondering what's going to happen when we make that plunge. The other reason I love this picture is because this shows, this picture was done in the 1930s. This is America. Pools and aquatics have been part of America and part of an American tradition for a long, long time, and looking forward to seeing our city become part of that picture. Okay. Figured out how to run this now. Our mission statement, I'm not going to read this. This is where I'm going to introduce the rest of the board. We've got some excellent volunteers who've been working with us. First off, Bob Carlson, vice president, also obviously on the city council. Pete Peters, where are you, Pete? I'm there. Retired district judge. What's that?
County judge.
County judge, sorry. Great civic-minded person and wonderful volunteer for us. Very level-headed, actually, this is Solomon even here. Nancy Sells. Nancy is the secretary of the Woodland Aquatic Project.
I need you to talk to the guy who you're here.
Nancy Sells, who is the secretary of the Woodland-
Treasurer.
Treasurer. You're right. This is what happens when I write. Treasurer of the Woodland Aquatic Project. She's got some banking background. Many of you know Nancy because she's all over the community. Great community member. Steve Jaroslow, who's just, I think, been helping do marvelous things in terms of round up supporters and get things going and keeping us all working on the project. He is active in a number of community activities, volunteer activities, a great citizen here. Also want to mention just quickly, we've got some past members of the Woodland Aquatic Board. Carol Harvey, who's now city council. Cord Preityman, who is a former president of the Woodland Aquatic Project. Good to see you folks here tonight as well. No mission statement. You can read that on our website. So, why are we here? This is, we've been working within the Woodland Aquatic Project for a number of years now and doing very good things, I believe. But, we're at a point now where we need to really start engaging with the city, and so, we wanted to set this up as the kickoff for that engagement, get things really moving so we can bring this thing to reality. Just some accomplishments real quickly that we've done. Conducted a community survey using all private donations, scientifically valid survey, held a town hall meeting to get public input. We paid for a business plan, which you've all seen now. We did that using private donations. We obtained our 501(c)(3) tax-exempt status, so we can now be a city partner to help engage on a capital campaign with the city, hopefully to offset some of the costs. We've solicited proposals from 25 different pool architect engineer teams. We're recommending one of two of those now, or two, we down-selected that to two now. We've visited many of the 10 other mountain communities similar to Woodland Park to learn about their experiences with funding, building, maintaining public pools. Some great lessons learned that we've collected over the years. So, in two years, a lot of volunteer effort. We've spent about $19,000, none of it city money. We're ready to make things start happening. So, what are we pursuing? Everything, you know, from one of our lessons learned and other programs is that we should be program-based. So, we started looking at what programs we want the Aquatic Center to support, and at the very top, we've got water aerobics, water therapy, beginning swimming, and play. That's what we'll do in the zero-entry laser pool with features that include a lazy river. I once thought a lazy river was a nice add-on, but it's actually a great therapeutic value for people doing recovery from various things. Six-lane competitive pool, six lane is the very minimum that you need to have real competitions with a diving well, and that'll support intermediate and advanced swim, club swim, school swim, kayak, scuba, lap swim, diving and play. Toddler pool to keep the kiddies separate for water acclimation, confidence-building, play, and the separate body of water will help control accidents. In addition to that, we'll have, obviously, support facilities, lobby lockers like lifeguard, spectator place for the competition, storage and utility, and a lot of call to have a hot tub there, a large hot tub. We also envision revenue-generating facilities, including kitchen concessions, rock wall, racquetball possibly, childcare. These don't cost a lot, but they add to the revenue for the facility. And we want to plan for growth, including incorporating the senior center into it, the youth center, and basketball, volleyball, gymnastics. So, here's the why, and I'm going to go, I'm just going to really touch on this because I think there's some other people here who can more elegantly say why they want a pool than I can, and a lot of you have heard me say why passionately we need to have this before. The five basic categories of why are health and wellness, civic responsibility, timing, it's the right time, economic vitality, and public safety. Health and wellness, the things I want to touch on here is, and one of them is from Cord Preityman, is that there are two things that if you haven't done by the age of 21, you're most likely to never do in your life, when it's smoke cigarettes. The other is to learn to swim. We put a lot of kids through Woodland Park who haven't learned to swim because the opportunities just aren't here. Want to change that. We have an aging community. Part of our feasibility study, our business plan showed the trend in Woodland Park is we're getting older. Water aerobics or aerobics are one of the few options for people with some disabilities for getting aerobic exercise. And my own mother does it a couple of times a week, goes down to her local YMCA with the other gray-haired ladies. Someday, I'll have gray hair too. And that's her social activity, and that's her, that's her way of getting exercise. I hope that we can have that opportunity one day for our citizens here. Economic vitality, I'm going to segue on the visitor center. How many people here, questions here, show of hands, have gone to one of the rec centers in Colorado, Silverthorne, Breckenridge, Gunnison, Avon, to use their swimming facility? So, obviously, one of the ways to enhance the visiting, visitor potential, especially in the winter for Woodland Park, is to bring that kind of facility here. I think that is true everywhere. Another thing I want to touch on here, well, no, I'm not going to touch on. In our survey that we did a couple of years ago now, we asked people, and this is, again, scientific survey, what was the number one recreational opportunity they wanted to see in Woodland Park? And overwhelmingly, it was the Aquatic Center. I'd love to, I'm a recreation guy. I'd love to see all of these things come to reality in this city. But, we got to start with the top item on the list. Public safety. Drowning is the second-leading cause of accidental death for kids under 14. I don't want to be one of those citizens that said, "I didn't do anything," when, God forbid, a tragedy happens to one of our youth, that we were sitting on top of the hideboard instead of diving in and making something happen. Timing. Historically, low interest rates, which we have right now, are already starting to creep up. This graph shows that there's been about a three-quarters of a point rise in interest rates in the last year. I don't know whether that's going to trend. Maybe that'll go up, maybe that'll go down, but hesitation can be expensive. Guidance document. The only thing that I'm going to point to here is number one, and this is the actions from the comprehensive plan, and that is, we're going to continue planning and secure funding for a community recreation center and enhancement of recreation of community amenities. That is our comprehensive plan, and I'm sure everyone here is committed to carrying out the actions of that comprehensive plan, which happened to be pretty close to what we're proposing in terms of resolution. Frequently asked questions. What's included? I already talked about that. Where will it be located? It will, that's a city council decision. Our recommendation is Memorial Park. I think one of the plans that they just came up with, one of the alternatives, is to place it in Memorial Park, the north side of Memorial Park. Not going to hit the pond, not going to take up the green space, but it's a good pit there. What will it cost? Recreation centers, the most recently built in Colorado is the Gypsum Rec Center, and that was $214 per square foot. Using the amenities that we listed before, that would put the price at $6.4 million with, and I also included a low range and a high range. We won't know that number better until after we've done a concept design, and that's when we'll get to a 95% confidence, not a 20% confidence where we are here. And that, of course, is today's dollars. I can't predict what's going to happen next year or the year after. What will it cost to operate? According to our business plan, which was done by Ballard King, professional organization, it will be, their forecast was $96,000, so, under 100K. And that's the net. That's after what it costs to operate it versus what we collect in terms of revenue. And by the way, that's very good for a pool. And by the way, that's very good for a pool, and part of that's attributable to, this is a relatively active and affluent community, believe it or not. So the next steps, in the resolution that's in front of city council today, really, these are these next steps. Finalize the site. That's part of the resolution. Identify funding. It's not our job to help you, we're willing to help or offer suggestions, but city council needs to figure out how to fund this thing, when it can be funded. That's part of the resolution. Choose a design build team. We've recommended our top two. And commission that concept design with the design build team. That'll help us go to the next step in terms of a capital campaign. That'll help get the site picture in for the rest of the community better, and that'll help everybody in terms of going forward. This is homecoming week, so I gotta say, "Go Panthers." Hope everyone makes it out to the game tomorrow night. It's gonna be cold, so good excuse to wear all your warm green stuff. Finally, I want to thank all the people who have sponsored us along the way. Some of them are here in this room. We've had very generous support from the community so far. I think everybody's willing to go to the next step, too. So with that.
Instead of questions for Jerry now, I'd like to go ahead and get the public comment, then we can have Jerry come back up and we'll ask some questions. I'm gonna, for the public comment, I'm just gonna go down the list, and we'll get to who we get to. Again, I'll ask you to, yes, Jerry?
One thing, if you don't mind, sir, is we have a disabled lady here who I think would like to get her comments in early, and also, I think, maybe some of the high schoolers who are busy with homecoming activities, if you could bring them up.
Well, if they've signed up.
They're all signed up.
Okay.
So. Aline? What's that?
I'm gonna defer my position to her on the table.
Then let's have her come up.
Aline, is that?
Can we get a distant video?
I'll make it quick.
No, that's good. Welcome, and please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Aline Joy Goodchild. I live at 607 Westlake in Woodland Park. I've been a resident here. I came to Woodland Park after an accident in 93, hearing about a pool and rehab and facilities to keep up my upper body strength. I've heard this three times in 20 years. I've heard that they were gonna do a pool in the last 20 years, and that's why I chose Woodland Park to live. I've not seen it happen yet. I'm all for it. I'm excited. If you guys work with everyone who wants to help create this, that would be awesome. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. And Jerry, who'd you have next that you wanted to? If there's a student, if somebody needs to leave, otherwise, I'm gonna go down the And that list is for the sake of fairness, so. Please state your name and address.
Ellie Miller, 955 Forest Road, 200 Lake George, Colorado. So hi, my name's Ellie Miller. I'm 16 years old. I'm a junior at Woodland Park High School, and this is my third year involved in student council. I'm currently the junior class representative, and I'm honored to be here tonight to represent myself and my peers. So when Ms. Sells came to me and asked if I would be willing to speak at tonight's meeting, my immediate reaction was yes, absolutely. I think a swimming pool would do wonderful things for not only the community, but also the younger generations. I have lived near Woodland Park my whole life, and I can honestly say it's a beautiful town, and I'm lucky to live in such a beautiful, safe, clean environment. But however, I believe there is a lack of teen entertainment throughout the community, and I believe this swimming pool could help bridge that gap. With the new swimming pool, kids could have a safe atmosphere to hang out and socialize, but also to be in an atmosphere that promotes a healthy and active living style, which I believe is one of the great characteristics that the state of Colorado embodies. Just to name a few, Cheyenne Mountain, Coronado, Harrison, and Liberty High School all have swim teams. It's never been practical for Woodland Park High School to have a swim team because the nearest swimming pool with the ability to train and practice in every day is far away, and this could potentially fix that problem. I know when I was younger, I loved to swim. I would have my mom tie my laps around the pool, and I loved to play diving games and even pretend I was a mermaid, but I was never the most confident swimmer. And I believe that came from the fact that the only time I ever actually got to swim was if someone had their birthday party at the country lodge, or my family was traveling and we were staying in a hotel. If there was a swimming pool in town, I could be a better swimmer. And I know this is a big project that would take a lot of time and dedication, but it would also be a place where kids would learn to swim for the first time, and it would be a place where families could build memories, and it would be a place to better our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Michaela McDonough, and I live at 1451 Chippewa Trail, Woodland Park. So as I mentioned, my name is Michaela McDonough. I am student body president of Woodland Park High School. My main purpose for being here today is to represent the student body's perspective on your decision for building an aquatic center. Don't worry, I'll keep this short. Our town is an absolutely lovely town. It is beautiful year round, and it's such a small knit community that you can't go anywhere without running into someone you know. We do, however, lack entertainment for the youth, especially for those who cannot drive. A few weeks prior to this month, the idea was presented to the high school students about potentially getting a pool in this town. Everyone was ecstatic. Having an actual form of entertainment that friends can gather together and do even during the winter excited every student. Kids here yearn for some source of amusement. It is known, as terrible as it may be, that kids here perform delinquent acts far too frequently. If any of you are parents, you grasp the importance of not having your children roaming the streets, especially if you are occupied with work obligations. By having an aquatic center, you understand that providing a place for those kids to go, you are also providing them a place to enjoy physical activity in addition to a social setting. Several years ago, the skate park was added into this town. Ever since then, I've seen numerous kids make use of that park. It provided an outlet for our ever-growing skater community whilst diminishing the amount of kids roaming the streets after school. Not only would the aquatic center appeal to the youth, but also furnishes the opportunity for physical rehabilitation. As for myself, and actually other students who are currently afflicted by sports injuries, swimming yields an excellent source of exercise without stress or strain on the body. Personally speaking, I'd rather keep my money and time here at Woodland Park as opposed to driving down to Manitou Springs. In summation, my family has been living here for nearly 21 years and believe it's long overdue. If Green Mountain Falls has a swimming pool, why can't we? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else that needs to speak at this time? If not, I'll go down the list. Ralph Holloway. See, that just shows we've got the age covered.
Thanks a lot.
Hey, guys, thanks for coming.
Ralph Holloway, 1018 West Midland Avenue. I have been working with, here recently through the Woodland Park Arts Alliance with a lot of youth, and one of the things that I've seen happen over and over is that we've lost some families that are going down the hill or actually have left the community because of lack of facilities. And to keep this short, just last year, I served on a committee to fund scholarships in a, outside of the Woodland Park Arts Alliance scholarships that we're doing with some of the top students at Woodland Park High School. And almost without exception, the question, well, the question was asked to every one of them, what is it that Woodland Park does not have that you would like to see? And that question was put to each one of them, and without exception, they made a point that there needed to be something there like an aquatic center or a youth center for the youth. And so I'm here to speak in favor of this resolution and that, see if we can't meet those needs that we hear over and over from those students when they said that there's just nothing here for them that they would like to see, and also to kind of keep some activities and keep them out of trouble. So thank you for looking at this, and I hope you will support it.
Pete Ewing next, do you want to speak?
Hi, my name is Jackson Peters. My friends call me Pete. I'm a member of the Woodland Aquatic Project. I'm an avid swimmer. I did offer my place in line to Aline, so I'll just say one thing. I concur with her comments that for people with disabilities and people that are getting older, the value of a pool is so, so great, and I certainly support that endeavor. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete.
My name is Gary Florence. I actually live in Green Mountain Falls, 10730 Mountain Avenue. We do have a swimming pool, but it's only in the summertime. I am here tonight as a representative of the Teller Senior Coalition, and we would like to present a resolution that we voted on at our last meeting. Whereas the Teller Senior Coalition provides essential services to the seniors in Teller County that help keep them active, socially engaged, and living independently. And whereas affordable local access to an aquatic center would provide wellness and fitness benefits to the Teller senior community in the form of a year-round, non-impact bearing exercise. And whereas, an aquatic center would also provide additional social interaction opportunities for the Teller counties, Teller senior community. Now, therefore being resolved that the Board of Directors of the Teller Senior Coalition supports the resolution before the mayor and council here on October 3, providing the citizens of Woodland Park have the opportunity to vote on an aquatic center. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Nathan Peterson? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Nathan Peterson. I live on 746 Elm Street. Being a teen in the community, I've, I would love to have a swimming pool. I also know at least 20 people off the top of my head who do go down to Manitou Springs at least once a month to use their swimming pool. So I mean, the demand is there. Also, my freshman sophomore year in high school, I went to Coronado. Coronado has a swimming pool in the school, and most, my favorite class at Coronado was swimming class. Even though I'm absolutely horrible at swimming, it's still a very fun activity. So I understand that there is a great demand for the swimming pool. The location is yet to be decided. I would suggest putting it close to the high school so that there is an opportunity for the high school to have swimming classes. Like in the presentation, most kids in Woodland Park don't know how to swim, so therefore putting it close to the high school might encourage classes to, for the youth, and I am very pro. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Nancy Sells. I live at 1261 Wilden Valley Ranch Drive, and I am a member of the WAP board. I've got my own personal statement and five statements that people have presented to me. I'll try to read them as quickly as I can, if that's okay.
Well, I mean, you need to keep it focused, and if it's the same thing over and over, I mean, just think about that, and just state their names and what their point is.
Okay, okay, this is my-
That way we have a chance for everybody.
This is my personal statement, and then I'll just abbreviate the other ones. As a child growing up in the Midwest, I was lucky enough to swim nearly every summer day in my community pool. What a treat it is for a child to learn to swim and enjoy the benefits of exercise and recreation. Unfortunately, my three children did not have that same experience growing up in Woodland Park. Although they did learn to swim, we cobbled together swim lessons in a variety of locales ranging from Golden Bell, Triple B Ranch, to the old racquetball with the dome cover that you guys, some of you guys probably don't even remember. This was not the ideal situation by any means. How marvelous it would have been to have a modern swimming pool for swim lessons and year-round recreations. Perhaps if we had a swimming pool, some of the frequent cries of our kids that you just heard tonight, that, "Mom, there's nothing to do up here," would have been quieted. As a 27-year resident of Teller County, I've been a part of each and every effort to bring a pool here, obviously without success. Although my children are now grown and past the swimming pool age, I'm hopeful that this dream may someday become reality for other Woodland Park kids, or perhaps my future grandchildren. Our family has been a huge participant in the park and rec sports over the course of 20-plus years, and I applaud the city for all those activities that are available. But how wonderful it would be to have a community pool that could be used year-round. It is just a real shame that a community our size and affluent does not have a pool. And, you know, the similar sized communities that our board traveled to, I know each situation is varied, but it certainly takes a local government ready to be a leader and supporter of such a project. As a Citizens Committee Board, we can only do so much, as Jerry said, and it's time for government to get involved. I'm gonna cut a little bit of this out, but I just wanted to say, I am confident that if our community pulls together with the strong backing of the local government, that the dream of a pool can happen. And let's just not be afraid to try. The time for a pool is now, and I respectfully ask the mayor and council to approve this referendum supporting a community pool. Thank you. And can I, I'll just read two of the statements.
Okay, 'cause, you know, 'cause I want to make sure I hear from the people that didn't take the time to come and be here.
Okay, these are very, very brief. The first one is Don Butzloff, Realtor, a Coldwell banker. "Thank you for allowing me to share my opinions and support the Woodland Aquatic Project. My wife Carrie and I have been members of the community since June of 2002 and have supported the community's efforts to build a recreation center. I totally understand the costs associated with the construction and ongoing expense of both maintaining the facility and the cost of staffing. As a Realtor, I'm often asked by prospective buyers if we have a rec center or a swimming pool. Unfortunately, not only do I have to inform that we do not, I am not able to tell them that there is one in our future. I believe a rec center is the best interest of our community. On a personal note, swimming has been very important in my life. I swam competitively in both high school and college, played competitive water polo, and was a swimming instructor throughout those years. I was also able to pay my way through college as a lifeguard. It is a shame that the youth of our community have not been able to experience the joy that having a local pool afforded me. I would ask the council look into means of financing a local rec center. I believe it will greatly benefit our community." Thank you, Don Butzloff.
You know what, I'm actually gonna cut you off-
Okay.
-because I'm gonna give the people that are here an opportunity.
Can I just name the people that have-
You may.
-gave me support letters? Andree Matthews, extremely active in our local schools, support letter. Amy Hoppy, local business owner, very active in our schools. Marissa Nuzhul, also the same, very active schools, a former educator. And Michael Harper.
No, both of them.
Yeah, I know, I know you do. And Michael Harper, also a local Realtor who's lived in Woodland Park for 32 years. Support letter.
If we have time, you can come back.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I'm Bill Avery. I live at 1940 Valley View Drive. I'm the treasurer of the Woodland Park Senior Citizens Club, and our Board of Directors has voted unanimously in support of this petition. Very simply, we think that a water aquatic center would be good for seniors, and it's time for some action. Thank you.
Thank you. Ian Seibel?
Hi, it's Elan Seibel, and I live at 700 Divide-
Oh, fine.
That's fine. 700 Divide South Drive and Divide. I'm a swim mom. I may be one of the few swim moms, real swim moms in Teller County. I, our family has suffered a lot of mileage, a lot of expense- of this petition. Very simply, we think that a water aquatic center would be good for seniors. And it's time for some action. Thank you.
Thank you. Ian Seigl, Seibel?
Hi, it's Elan Seibel. And I live at 700 Divide-
Oh, fine.
That's fine. 700 Divide South Drive and Divide. I'm a swim mom. I may be one of the few swim moms, real swim moms in Teller County. I, our family has suffered a lot of mileage, a lot of expense, and a lot of time to be able to do this for our families. My two daughters, they go to, well, one of them just graduated from the high school and she's now in college. But they've been swimming since they were practically babies in mommy and me classes down in the Y. We've lived up here for 17 years. I quit my full-time job when they were born. And only because of that have I been able to be a swim mom. I've worked part-time since then. And I have driven up and down the pass all summer long so that, since they were eight and 10, they could be on competitive swim teams. And then they have swim as out-of-district swim, swim athletes for Manitou Pool because we don't have a pool. How sad to show three kids from Teller County on a swim team in the local newspaper. I, I brought you some pictures. And I know you're all for swimming and it's, you're worried more about the budget. And that's the real issue is the budget. It's not that you don't want a swim team. But I brought you pictures of the summer swim team they participate in from Valley Pool in Pleasant Valley to show you these kids and all the fun they have and how wonderful it is.
I'd be glad to take those from you.
Yes. But just to remind you what a wonderful activity it is for the community and how sad we don't have it. And all the, the sacrifices our family has made over the years so our girls could do this. It is one of the best gifts that I've given my kids to be swimmers. And here's their first paycheck as lifeguards this summer. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Dr. Richard Harris?
I don't know if you remember me, but when I moved here in 1988, you were my physician for about three years.
Well, yes. I have been practicing medicine in Woodland Park for 35 years, longer by far than anybody else. And I certainly am in support of the idea of having a swimming facility in Woodland Park. I, my other things that I've done, I worked for 10 years without making any money out it in getting our hospital built. I'm currently on the Hospital Association Board along with Kurt Grinna. Thank you for your approval earlier of that extension. I would like to talk about one particular segment of the population that would really benefit from this pool facility. As you know, we have many retired military veterans here in our community. And, you know, I have a very large TRICARE practice. And many, many of these retired military veterans in my practice have given their bodies to the support of our country and making us safe here at home. And by the time I see them as TRICARE retired military patients, many of them have broken bodies from their service for our country. And if they've been paratroopers, they've shattered their ankles, their legs and knees are gone. And, you know, also because of their service to this country, they have experienced many, many stressful events in serving us. And so, their cholesterol is high. This is what happens with stress. And one of the ways that we control elevated cholesterol and keep their cardiovascular systems healthier is exercise. Well, if your ankles and legs are shot, I can't tell them to go for a five-mile hike three days a week. It's not gonna work. For a lot of these retired military veterans, their only option to get the aerobic exercise that will make their good cholesterol go high, will decrease their risk of cardiovascular problems as they age, is a pool. And I plead for them that please find a way to do this. And I know it's expensive to do this, but, and, and it's gotta make sense financially. But these people are depending on you. And thank you for listening.
And, just one second. And I, I think we didn't get your address for the record.
Oh, yeah. My address is 2075 Rampart Range Road, just outside of Woodland Park.
Thanks. Steve Jarrislow?
Steve Jarrislow, 610 Sun Valley Drive, Woodland Park, Colorado. I have a prepared statement. And I also have statements, written statements from several other major business leaders here in town, supporting this project. Before I get to that, I want to tell you, I find it an outrage that you have artificially limited the amount of time that we can talk on this project to one hour. This project has been in the works for 18 months. This is of great concern to virtually every demographic segment of this community. We have worked very hard to get the people sitting here, the people watching on TV, and many other people who would have liked to have attended but couldn't, to support us on this.
And you're, and you're using your time right now also.
You're damn right I am. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I am. And when you gave plenty of time to the, the recycling project, did you limit them to an hour?
Steve, I'm gonna ask you to stick to the subject, please. You have an opportunity to have an impact on us. And getting all upset and, and doing this isn't gonna help. So, I'm really gonna ask you, you know, most of us are really for this happening. So, please-
I hear you.
-tell us what you want to tell us.
I hear you, but I, I resent a, an artificial one-hour limit on a project of this importance to the future of this community.
Well, I'll just tell you, it's not an artificial, it's an actual limit.
Well, it's an unfortunate one.
Okay.
I will first tell you, and this is said-
Once you sit on this side, if you ever do, you might appreciate some of that.
No, actually, I used to think I wanted to enter political office in retirement.
Please go ahead.
But after hearing a project like this-
Steve, please continue.
...and taxpayers like me, I decided, no, I don't want to do it. I have four statements. And I, I apologize to these folks for not being able to read their statements in their entirety. But we have four business leaders whose statements I will submit to Cindy Morris. The last paragraph of Carol Sterman's statement, and as we all know, she is the president and chairman of Sterman Industries here in town, a major economic contributor to our well-being. Her last paragraph reads, "For the benefit of our community and residents, I recommend that the Woodland Park City Council pass this resolution so that this project can advance to the next stages such that within three or so years, this wonderful community of ours can proudly point to yet another great reason for living, locating a business, and working in Woodland Park. Thank you for your consideration." My next statement is from Stephanie Kaufman, who's a dentist here in town. I'll read part of her last paragraph.
And please keep that focused because you will be cutting in to the time of the people who have come.
I'm, I was actually one of the last signers on the doc, on the sign-in sheet, if I remember correctly. And we have till, based on your artificial limit, another 23 minutes. I do want everyone to be able to speak, however.
And again, it's an actual limit.
It's an unfortunate limit. "It is time that we as a community can become more self-sufficient. Leaving our own community for meaningful recreation and building lifelong skills is a great burden for our families and aging community. It is no longer okay to be deficient of such basic facilities as an aquatic center. Let's get it done and show our community we care about meeting their needs. It's about priorities. It's about a healthy community for all." Signed, Stephanie Kaufman. I have a statement from Chuck Mahoney, who's a major builder here, Real Estate and Development. His comments are much to the same effect. I also have a statement from Tanner Coy, head of Tweeds, another major player in the economy of Woodland Park. And while he does not want to comment on the financing and the statistics and the data, he does support the project. I will give copies of these statements to Cindy. I now have my own statements. And I will do my best to abbreviate them. This, this resolution has nothing to do with the integrity or the competence of anyone in the mayor and council or the city staff. It does, however, have a lot to do with preferences and priorities, and perhaps just a little bit of vision. I think we all agree that essential functions like garbage collection, road repairs, postal delivery, police protection, fire protection, these are all critical to the, the functioning of any society. That's the grease that keeps our civilized societies going. This doesn't involve that. This is at a level below that admittedly in parks and recreation. But nonetheless, while, while everyone, I think, here wouldn't be here in Woodland Park unless we all felt we had a good quality of life here, I believe that this city council not only has an obligation to maintain the existing quality of life for all of our residents, but to strive to improve it. And this, ladies and gentlemen, tonight, in these council chambers, is your opportunity to do just that. This aquatic center appeals to virtually every demographic segment in our community, from little toddlers who can use the wading pool, to senior citizens who just want to be able to relax in a recreational pool, or maybe in the hot tub. We have a total of five pools projected in our concept. And they appeal, including the competitive pools and the diving pool. The, the kids in high school, as you've heard, can enjoy it. So, I won't repeat that. But this project is much, much scaled down from the project we had three and a half years ago. We're estimating it at around $7 million, as Jerry Simon said. The last project was up around $17 million. It's much smaller in scope, much smaller in price. And equally important, one of the big reasons why the last initiative failed, as we all know, is because it was contingent upon the imposition of new taxes. We are not talking about new taxes tonight. We believe, we firmly believe, we believe without any doubt, that this project can be funded without the imposition of new taxes within existing tax revenues if the mayor and council will only change their priorities and their preferences. Beyond all that, all the wellness and fitness benefit that this project has for all of us, all 7,300 of us in this delightful community, it has enormous economic benefits as well. This project will create jobs, construction jobs in the short term, staff O and M jobs in the long term. So, it's good for jobs, it's good for people. Beyond even all that is, this project will become a magnet for new families and new businesses in Teller County and Woodland Park. It will become an economic driver, something that Brian Fleer and others here would agree we so desperately need. The, the Board of Education is crying out because we don't have enough young families with students in school. This would attract families with young students. This will attract all kinds of quality people to Woodland Park as an even better, even more improved, bedroom community. And to, to say that it will spur economic growth, I think, is an understatement. So, it's good for business and it's good for people. It's just good for everyone. It's just positive growth. There, and, and the fact is that, and not only do you see the support here today, and the people who couldn't make it, and the people who are watching on TV, but you have a long history of people, including this council, saying, you know what? This is a good idea. We have the comprehensive plan of 2009, 2010.
You have one minute left.
We have the Purini poll of 2011. We have the mayor and council's own goals and objectives in 2012, where this project came out right near the very top of all their druthers. We have the Ballard King study. If you haven't read it, you should. It has a glowing endorsement of this project. It says it's the right project at the right time for this community. It is feasible. We have the population to support it. And, and it will become a huge economic driver for us. And on top of all this, this would further support the, the Downtown Colorado Initiative, which is Gary Braveto's idea, a brilliant idea, and is gonna be forwarded by, by Brian Fleer. It plays right into spurring economic development in downtown. And, and clearly, we're concerned about the funding of this project. There is, there's, we're projecting 10% excess fund sales tax revenues this year. We had a million-dollar excess revenues last year.
Your time is up.
And the money is there.
Your time is up.
All you've got to do is change your preferences and priorities on your projects. And this project can be funded. The public taxpayers' funds are there to do it. The public wants it. It's time you follow the will of the people.
I'm gonna ask you-
Thank you.
Okay. And I do ask the audience to be respectful of everyone else in city council. No matter how passionate you might be, you need to be respectful of others. Next is Steve, and I'm not sure I got your last name. Oh, welcome. Come on up.
Pardon my handwriting.
Pardon my reading.
I'm Steve Standard, 1440 Masters Drive in Woodland Park. And I support this project. I just wanted to bring a couple of things to the council's attention. After the glowing report we had from the visitor's center, the impact of a facility like this on tourism in, in Woodland Park is obviously a, a very positive thing, I believe. The second thing I wanted to bring up or to mention was, when you get up tomorrow and it's 20 degrees out, hey, think about all the things that we do all summer long. And we enjoy our wonderful climate up here in the summertime. Okay, when it's cold out, we're gonna be hiking a lot less. We're gonna be walking our neighborhoods a lot less. And a, an excellent indoor athletic facility would be very useful to us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill, and I can't read the last name.
Yes, Bill. The only thing I've had to say has been said, so I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to come up and just state your name and address for the record?
I'm good with that.
Okay, thanks. David Sprague?
Hi, Jill. I'm good.
Okay. Steve Rochek?
I'm Steve Rochek. I'm not sure which address you want me to use.
whichever one you want to give us for the record, Steve.
You want my house address? You want my business address? Either way, I-
Give your home address.
Okay. I live at 45 Leisure Lane, which is actually in the county. But I am a business owner here in Woodland Park. I've lived here since 1970. So, a very long time. I started as a school teacher. In 1972, I started summer rec program that has now developed into the Woodland Park Recreation Department. That happened with a $500 grant taken from the cemetery fund of the city of Woodland Park with, with cooperation with the Woodland Park School District. There were two employees, myself and another teacher, and we ran a summer rec program for eight years before I retired. In the mid-'70s, just so everybody knows, we did have a Woodland Park swim team. They did practice in Manitou. It was coached by Mike Conley. Over the last 43 years of my living here, I can think of at least eight surveys that have been taken. And every survey, the number-one request was to have a swimming pool. And it was overwhelmingly high, the percentage of people that was that number-one request. What's happened in the last 40 years that we still don't have a swimming pool? My question kind of is, I know that there's, and there was alluded to the other plan that you all have commissioned. And how does this fit into that plan? Are they, are you blending this plan? Or is this a separate plan? I don't, not really sure. But I hope that that plan includes the swimming pool. That would be definitely a preference for this person. And I would hope that, and I don't know how it goes from that plan to actual, actuality, but that these guys have done a ton of work. And it ought to be put together in a way that makes it happen so that we have a total recreation facility, not a rec facility, and not just a swimming pool. I think that'd be a huge mistake. I think Breckenridge, and that's my best example of having attended that, mostly with my four grandchildren. Because when we go to Breckenridge, that's one of the only places you can get four small people into and have a good time for two hours. And it still cost us 40 bucks. But that's fine. Funding to me seems like a minor thing, although I know it's a huge dollar amount. I don't know how, is it Colorado Go or Go Colorado or-
Great Outdoors Colorado.
Great Outdoors Colorado, or Lotto Fund. Why aren't we trying to draw in a bunch of those funds to do that? And I don't know who does that. I don't know where they come from. But I know that there's a lot of Lotto money out there that's being bought up in those little tickets. And we certainly ought to be able to qualify for something like that. And so, my position is, is yes, I support a swimming facility, but I also support that total rec facility. There's a whole lot of other activities that people do than swim or whatever, sit in a hot tub. But the fact of the matter is, I think it would bring us more benefit to have a total rec program. But I definitely think a swimming pool would be an assist and a help. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank all of you.
Thank you. Appreciate. Longtime perspective there. I believe it's Carrie Roth. Carrie?
Hello. Carrie Roth, 1116 Tormigan Drive, Woodland Park.
Fully support it. I feel like enrollment numbers are going to be dropping without a swimming facility. I know that's a big fear for many elementary, sorry, elementary parents for consolidating --
Step towards the mic a little bit.
Sorry. Consolidating, there's been words spoken of three elementaries going down to two, and I feel like a swimming pool will increase the numbers and maybe even boost the economy to add more younger population. So, fully support it.
Thank you. Carol Whitman?
Everybody's already said everything, but definitely support it.
And that's everybody who has signed up. Is there anyone else here who would like to come and speak at this time? Please, come forth.
My name's Deborah Mareska. I live at 401 Poetsville, Florissant, Colorado, and I represent the Mountain Top Cycling Club, and we just wanted to say that we stand behind the aquatic program.
Thank you. Jerry, I would like to invite you to come back up and maybe give a little summation and perspective and go from there.
First off, thank you, everyone, for showing up tonight. Turns out more of you were here for us than the visitor center, and I know. And also, thank you for the city council for hearing us and indulging in maybe our, we are very passionate on this. I understand you have some tough decisions to make, and we all have some tough decisions to make. And I understand that with respect to the resolution itself, there's some angst with some of the wording. It is, folks, it's a resolution. It's not, it's not an ordinance, it's not a law. It is our starting point to say, we're moving forward as a city, because as you've heard from all of our folks here today, it's time to start, make a plan, and stick to it. I think Mayor Turley, you've added some great input, and we've had some great dialogue in the last couple of days, and look forward to really engaging and going forward.
So council, you have some questions for Jerry, or comments that you'd like to make? Yes, we'll go with Eric first.
Well, I'll start the ball rolling here. I, first off, appreciate everyone that came out this evening. I think the last time this went on the ballot, prior to the initiative that, I guess, that had to be signed, that I know Neil helped put together, I supported putting it on the ballot. If we had this kind of support, we probably wouldn't even be here tonight, because frankly, it would have, the sales tax would have passed, and we would have had a funding stream, and we would have built a pool. But that didn't happen, and I think it didn't happen twice, as I remember, it's been on the ballot twice. I was sitting here crunching numbers and looking at our sales tax, so if I wasn't paying attention, that's why, because I was thinking through, and, you know, ultimately, in my mind, it's not a question of whether the community wants it or not. You know, I think the community overwhelmingly wants it. I mean, the question is, how do we pay for it? Just crunching some quick numbers, I mean, we're talking about six, $700,000 a year that we're looking to allocate. And that's not just a one-year type of allocation. I mean, that's a 30-year deal. $7 million is $450,000 a year in payments, as it relates to a bond issuance at four and a half percent. If we're successful, and we only have a $100,000 a year shortfall, well, that puts us in the $550,000 a year range that we would have to pay somehow out of some fund. If we're maybe a little optimistic on our projections, and frankly, I always like to plan and have a little contingency, and we only get 60% of our operating dollars back in revenues, we're looking at a $200,000 annual shortfall. So that takes us to $650,000. That represents about, you know, 12, 15% of our current sales tax revenue, total sales tax revenue that we collect. So whereas if we were to pass, and I'm not necessarily advocating for this, you know, a half-cent sales tax, we'd have $700,000, $800,000 a year that, boom, you know, we would have a dedicated funding stream. You know, from a government perspective, and I am going to get to some questions, so I'm sorry, but from a government perspective, you know, there are essential services that we have to provide. The good news is, as I've talked to you, Jerry, and others, talked to Bob, is we've seen a tremendous increase in sales tax in our community. I think that's going to continue with some of the things that are going on here, and we're going to continue to see that increase. And so there may be a slice of revenue there that maybe could be dedicated. So it just, this is a big decision. Some questions that I have. From a structure perspective, how do you see this? Is this something that's owned by the city, financed by the city? Who runs it? Does the park and rec of the city run it? Is it run by an outside entity such as a YMCA-type entity? Is there, your 501(c)(3), do they step in and actually operate and run the facility?
Yeah, great question, Eric. This will be a city facility. That's our, plain and simple, that's our vision. And who operates it? What makes sense to me, Jerry Simon, not necessarily the Woodland Aquatic Project, is that we look to outsource the operations of it. I think that would be most efficient. Certainly, most of the other communities we visited, they're city-run.
Right.
So that's one of those things that we need to work together to iron out. First, we need to build a facility.
I mean, I think the positive thing for outsourcing is, you might get, you know, better advertising and such. The downside is, it's probably for-profit, which means you got to generate even more revenue, so. You know, another question I have is, the initial $7 million, I mean, it's a significant amount of capital on the front end. Have you guys explored or talked to or reached out to any of the Elpamars, talked about, you know, GOCO grants, which frankly, everybody's after GOCO grants, and we've funded many things in the city of Woodland Park through GOCO grants? And that's just, you know, we're competing internally with ourselves, along with everybody else. You know, the mine, I mean, there are just a lot of folks out there, and I know for the hospital, there was a long campaign to raise funds to kind of get that going. And so is that something, you know, where, you know, we can maybe say, hey, we'll show that there's some initiative here, but, you know, we need to raise $3 million in some sort of grants or donations, and then we'll step up and fund the rest? I mean, have you guys talked about that? Is that something that you've reached out to folks? Is that even a possibility, or is it just?
Absolutely. In fact, Neil Levy and I had a conversation with some Elpamar folks. We have, we have reached out to those organizations. We need to, we need to be on a plan first. So if we're on track with the city of cooperative arrangement, you know, however we can work it out, so that we have some goals, some plan that we're marching to, then we can start a vigorous capital campaign to raise private money. With respect to GOCO money, I think--
That's tough.
They don't fund buildings, they only fund outdoor.
Right. Well, there you go.
Cindy has been a liaison on the Woodland Aquatic Project. I neglected to say that, but she shot us down on that several times, early and often.
So, but speaking for, speaking for the board, I know there are other questions.
I'm going to restrict you a little bit. There's other council members that would like to speak.
I just want to ask one more question, and I'm done. As it relates to your ideas on fundraising, what would you, I mean, what's a number, what's a goal that you would maybe throw out to us that you would try to attain or shoot for?
Good question, and in looking at some of the other facilities across the state, we asked what they were able to raise, and it runs a gamut. Gypsum raised almost nothing. They didn't have much of a capital campaign. Pruda raised almost $2 million in a capital campaign. I'm optimistic that within our city, we can have a significant fundraising, a capital With respect to foundations, it kind of hurts that, and in our conversation with the foundation folks, that we are kind of an affluent city, and recreation facilities are not typically at the top of their list, and then they look at the affluence of the community as well. So somewhere between zero and $2 million. I personally, when we get to that phase, and God, I hope we do get to that phase where we're raising money, I plan to be the least popular person in Woodland Park, because I'm going to be asking for money from everybody that comes and, that I come in contact. They're going to, you're all going to pretend that you're not home when you see me come.
Well, I've got a few questions, I think. Jerry, first of all, yeoman work for you guys on the aquatic board, and I just admire you guys for putting out the kind of effort you did, and the passion that you do have about that. And I recognize the fact, we all wanted, we all wanted, you know, a aquatic center, or even bigger, a recreation center, as a matter of fact. We've been doing this for 20 years. I was here in 1992, we tried to get the YMCA up here, so there's a long history around this, so it's not like we're any of us are against anything like this. We're for it. Now, how much does the citizens of Woodland Park want to pay to make this happen? And I'm all for it. They want to pay for it, that's great. But we got to ask that question. In order to ask that question, we've got to have an idea how much it's going to cost per individual to do this. Now, I know, we get it through sales tax, and that's probably a smart idea, because that opens up to a wider community. Have you guys ever thought about creating a recreation district, instead of doing, just putting a burden all on the city? That we can form a wider district, because this is open to everybody. You mentioned people in fluorescent divide, they're not Woodland Park citizens, yet you're asking the Woodland Park citizens to be responsible for this whole thing. You ever thought about creating a recreation district?
Great question, and yes, we have. In fact, I had that conversation with Mayor Turley and David Butter just last week. I think, personally, I think a recreation district is a nice option. It's how Evergreen built their aquatic facilities, and I say that plural, because they have multiple. It's how Fair Play got, yes, Fair Play has a pool. That's how they built their pool. It has been a successful avenue for others. Now, the great thing about the sales tax is it does allow us to tap in from, you know, 60% of our revenue comes from outside the city, so it's a good, good way to help. So we're not all, not all, you know--
My question I've asked is, have you ever, have you considered that, and maybe that's an option to do, where they make us responsible for the whole thing? I did some research, too. You know, I'm not, although I profess to be a little stupid up here a lot of times, right, because I don't know anything, but I do do some research. And Manitou is an interesting area. They got an interesting pool, they've had their pool since 1974, because back then, pools didn't cost very much, obviously, so it didn't cost them much for capital expenditure to make that thing. But I can tell you, right now, this year, their operation maintenance, which includes everything, you know, maintaining the pool, the staff, and all that stuff, is about $360,000. Their revenue for the year was $200,000, so they got a shortfall, $160,000, which the, you know, the taxpayer, the general fund of Manitou is responsible for, okay? So these are things we have to look at. You know, do the residents of Woodland Park want to foot that bill, you know, that kind of thing? And that, and that's, and that's a good effect. I mean, there are pools that are doing a lot worse than that. And the reason why he told me, Rory, the guy down at the rec, he told me the reason why he's able to get $200,000 is he just doesn't have just the pool, he makes more money on the weight center and all that other stuff. The pool is a losing proposition. So that's what we're faced with. We're faced with something, we don't want it to become a white elephant, we don't want, you know, the burden of taxpayers, and that's my, I look at the impact on people when I ever try to do something. And yes, the impact was, yes, it's great to have a good facility here to support everybody's desire to have that here, but you got to be willing to pay for that. And that's the question we have, that's the question we have to put through any resolution, through any vote. This is what it's going to cost you if you want to do this, right? And I think we've got to be clear about that. If we put it on a ballot issue, we got to be really clear, this is what it's going to cost.
Great point, and I think you, the city council, was spot-on, asking for us to produce that feasibility study, so we have a good handle of what you can expect in terms of those numbers. Syndicating in is a great resource. She's done a lot of work throughout the state, and the basic rule of thumb is, recovery gets better the bigger the facility is. Now, that's not a good answer, but that is reality. You know, a pool only, you're probably going to have a lower recovery than a Durango, which is, you know, enormous.
Have you ever considered RE2? Because RE2 is a big factor in this thing. Once again, you're putting a whole burden on the city, you know, to construct this thing and to operate, maintain it. What about some kick-in from RE2? That's why I'm saying, if you form a recreation district, now you open up to a wider community. And that's the only thing I'm saying about it.
Yeah, good question, and if you followed the plight of RE2, I think they might kick me out of the room if I even have--
But, you know, there are other considerations.
We really are optimistic that this aquatic center will help be an attractant for young responsible families who want their kids to swim.
Oh, it's no question about that.
And help their financial perspective. Can't guarantee that's going to happen, but we, we're optimistic that it will.
Just one other interesting figure that I came up with, because part of the sales tax, we tax food as part of the sales tax. Did another analysis study that Woodland Park average family of four pays about $700 a month on groceries, and Colorado Springs is about $560. So if we increase the sales tax, we're even adding to that burden, especially when you'd have to talk about buying necessities of life, and that happens to be true.
And, you know, we're hoping we can find an avenue that doesn't require a sales tax. Personally, and this is just Jerry Simon talking, if we funded this whole, not the WAP, because some of them will throw me out if I say this, but I'm going to say it anyway. If we funded the whole thing, it would take a 0.4% sales tax increase, we'd still be lower than Colorado Springs in our total sales tax burden. It would amount to six cents per day per person for our sales tax base. I don't think that's a huge--
Well, it isn't, but I'll go ahead and add, but we have to be somewhat astute to issues that we've done in the past and initiatives in trying to raise tax. And I'm going to give everyone else a chance to speak, and then I'm going to speak a little bit about what my concerns are, and relative to the way we approach this, and a possible way forward. And I have thoughts on that, and we discussed it, but I will actually discuss that. Yes, Bob?
Being on the board, I really don't have any questions, so I'll pass.
Okay. Carol?
Well, my question was, why in this resolution did you not address a possibility of a sales tax increase? It's a very limiting resolution that kind of forces the council to consider only two sources of revenue stream, when in fact, we don't have the money, the capital outlay, to build a facility. We may have the money for operations and maintenance, but we don't have the money to build it. So why, why in this resolution did you not include consideration of a sales tax increase?
That was a topic that was hotly discussed within our board meetings. We saw how the sales tax initiative in 2010 fared. We don't think a sales tax would be successful, and Carol, we think, we would like first for the city to take a hard look at, at all the revenues, projected revenues as well, before we make that conclusion.
Yeah, but we do that. We do that. We have strategic planning sessions, we do all, we talked about this item during our last goals and strategic planning session. We evaluate all of this stuff. We evaluate the needs of the community, safety being the top priority. And we budgeted. It's not like we're sitting back down there and saying, oh, well, you know, it's nice to have $30 million here, $20 million there. We go through an analysis, not like we're sitting on our butts.
Yeah, I understand, and Mr. Braveto--
Jerry, excuse me, I want to say something. And Carol, going back to your question, I mean, if you look at the results of the survey that the WAP did, and we didn't discuss that tonight, but in fact, in that survey, which was being replied to mostly by, to be candid with people that are, have an interest in the swimming pool, and that's the people that took candidly the time to respond, even though it's a survey of a larger group, the numbers, you know, one of the questions--
of a larger group, the numbers, you know, one of the questions was, are you willing to support an increase in sales tax to fund the construction of an aquatic project? And from this, it was clearly no. So I mean, so that answers the question about sales tax increase, and plus, we've been there. So, you know, my thoughts is, again, is how do we move forward and actually end up with something happening? So.
Oh, I'm quite aware of the results, I have them right here. That was 2011. It's 2013, and we're getting ready to go back into our budget discussions for the year for 2014. And frankly, this is probably a discussion to have after we close what we're calling public hearing.
No, it's not a public hearing.
Exactly, and I don't want Jerry to stand up here and endure our discussion. There is no money there for capital outlay for a $7 million building. Full stop.
And part of the resolution just calls for you guys to scrutinize the budget and tell us.
And I would just go back to that and say, what Gary has said, we've done that. I mean, we do that as part of the process, we did that as part of the goals and objectives, and the council, you know, came to a way forward on that, it just didn't set well with everybody. But again, we can talk more about that, I just want to hear from everybody. Ken?
Well, we've been down this road before. And the same, same thing keeps coming up, as has been said over and over and over again. We are responsible for running this city and being responsible with the money we bring in. Recently, I'm on council, but I've been there before, I've been on planning commission, and it's always the same thing, where's the money going to come from? And at this point, I don't see where that's coming from. There's some debate about that, I think we can have more discussion about that, if we can find it someplace. I support having the facility, no question about it, I think everybody does. We have to be responsible where we spend the city's money. And at this point, I don't see that. If something else can come up, whether you can get the people to agree to a sales tax increase, or raise some money, or in some form, I don't see how we're going to get there. I really don't. And a lot's been said by Eric and Gary, and I support a lot of what they've said as well. It's the same old problem, it's not just a matter of coming up with the money out of the budget we have, it's not that easy. That's all I have to say.
Well, there've been some good arguments presented here this evening. I support an aquatic center. You've heard all the good reasons why it's difficult to do with respect to the funding. The issue has been defeated several times because of the funding. One of the questions I would have for you is, what kind of a marketing campaign are you going to have that's different and more aggressive than the last ballot issues? And if the ballot issue is passed, we're back to the fundamental question, we don't have $7 million. Operating expenses, we could probably cover. So the challenge, then, is to decide where else you can find the funds.
No, you've passed for now, now it's my turn.
Please do, yes, go ahead.
I'm one of the sevens, so not just being the mayor, running the meetings, I have my turn at giving comments also. I'm going to go through a couple of things. I've looked at this really, really hard.
Actually, if you don't mind, Don, Mr. Schaefer did ask me a question there.
Oh, okay.
And what is different between this and the last one? And this is completely different. The last effort was the YMCA effort, it was a full rec center, it was a 1% sales tax increase, it was at the depth of the economy, there were a lot of people, there was this alternate campaign, Ta Fit, people thought that was a real prospect. So this is very different from the past effort. I think we've learned from the past effort, we're not planning to compete with private business.
But you're not.
Which would help our operating cost if we did, but to answer your question, this is.
But you're not willing to go forward to ask the residents of Woodland Park to increase their sales tax 1%? That's what you're telling me.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask each council member, raise your hand and be recognized to speak, and I will recognize you for speaking. That way, we can keep the order.
I just want him to answer my question.
Okay, but please be recognized. Okay? You want to speak?
No, I want him to speak, because I said. I'm sorry. Go into the, citizens of Woodland Park and ask for a 1% increase and form a district or whatever you want to do. You're a 501(c), you can ask for funding from El Pamar and all these other places. It's not easy for us to do that.
And we will do that, as soon as there is a concrete plan to get something put in place, absolutely, we'll do that.
Okay. Now, I'm going to say a few of that. In talking about a district, and we've looked at things like that, the problem with the district, and when you start spreading that out and you start trying to bring the funding in from property taxes, is property taxes are already high. And plus, if you were to increase property taxes in the county and city, that really shafts the commercial businesses because, you know, and because of the rates that they pay. So, you know, and I just look at it in the discussions I've had, I mean, David Butterrey and I have gone through a lot, and as well as what we have in our meetings, the, I mean, when it's sales tax, it comes from a large number of people that pass through our community and help pay for these things. And I just think there's goodness in that, being a resident living here, that if you can capitalize that. So I really personally like sales tax. And just, let me finish my, let me finish my items, and then I will recognize you. This is the thing about being the mayor. One of the things, and a lot of discussion has occurred, and it's in the resolution, is about the 410 fund. And for those that don't know, the 410 fund is commonly called the street fund, and that's the fund that the citizens passed on 1% sales tax. Again, if you're raising taxes, it has to go to a vote of the people. And that was done in, I believe, 1984.
Correct.
At that time, the streets in Woodland Park were dirt and drainage, and everything was a mess, and the only thing that was good out of all of that is because you didn't have pavement, a lot of the water percolated into the ground. At least some of it did, Phil, the engineer, but some did, but not, a little bit more than it does when you've got pavement. But anyway, the citizens passed that 1% sales tax for us to pave our streets and, in fact, you know, take care of our streets and the town. And that's what we've been doing. You know, I look at that, and right now, I think about things on the 410 fund and what would be done. I mean, my original approach a couple of years ago was when the bonds were paid off. I mean, being a good, physically conservative individual, I mean, I've had little lights going off that, wow, you know, we could lower the sales tax. And just so you know, it takes a vote of the people to raise it, but to lower it just takes a vote of this, a majority vote of this group right here. So I mean, if this group decided there was money in a 410 fund, and we wanted to lower that sales tax to a half a percent and leave that extra $700,000 in the pockets of the people that are buying things at the stores, this council could do that. We could do it the next meeting with public hearings and different things. So anyway, but I look at that, and that was my initial approach. And then I really, in the discussions, looked at it and thought, this is a pretty important funding stream. You're talking about streets, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and the stormwater that goes with that. And right now, with all that's happened, if you want, I mean, if you look down the past on Fountain Creek and you see all the things, how do you, you know, we talk about canyons and gorges, how do you think all that got created? It's because of water running off. And, of course, people downstream, Green Mountain Falls, Cascade, Manitou Springs, Colorado Springs, all very concerned about stormwater. And it starts right up here in Woodland Park, if you're talking about Fountain Creek. And so I look at our responsibilities of doing those things that are necessary out of that 410 fund. And what I really, when I thought about it, it's easy to sit back and think, man, we can lower the taxes. But when I really thought about it and looked at it hard, I really thought, we need to really, once the bonds are paid off, use that money that we have, that the taxpayers voted for, for that funding. And let's do, over the next few years, and there is a plan that's laid out, the public works and the city manager have gone through that, and we have a street fund and plan, and I'd like to see that executed and really use those monies for what they were intended, which is, makes us not only a better community, but a better neighbor, and accomplish those. And then, when those get done, and there's a projection for that, and there'll always be maintenance, but maybe we can really look at that and see if there can be some changes in that fund that could support that. So let's just say, I came to a conclusion that maybe 410 fund was not a good way to go. But I started looking at general revenue, and I'm going to talk about, you know, possible ways forward versus, you know, necessarily the resolution. I think I'll just go ahead and do that and get it in your mind. But I really started looking at general revenue, and I asked David Butterrey, our city manager, and he worked with Kelly, our finance director, let's really look at that. Budgets, you know, we've got revenue streams going up in the general revenue, there's things we want to do. I mean, you know, if you look at the whole list of projects, and the council's done that, that we want to take care of and make happen, there's a whole slew of them, and you can't afford them all. So it's a matter of, within the general revenue, it's always been for me, hey, there's things we have to do, but on the others, let's sit down and talk about it as a council, let's review it, and let's see where our priorities are, and let's see where it really gets racked and stacked. And I think we've done that in our goals and objectives and the guidance we give to the city manager. But sometimes it's, you know, the result kind of comes out based upon your focus going in. I mean, were you really focused in trying to look at this and see where it goes? So one of the things, in working through that, and we had a meeting with Jerry early last week, we've been trying to have it for a month, but schedules are crazy between his and mine and David's, and Eric's, Eric's we were going to include in that also. But it's really clear that there are some monies that I think, in the general revenue, and again, it's just David Turley speaking, that could be committed towards a swimming facility, an aquatic project, if that's a goal of council. Again, I'm just talking for one person. But I think there's things that could be there. One of the things that I look back at, and it frustrates me, and I think everybody makes decisions for good reasons, but you know, when Walmart was being built, and they talk about the sales tax, and the sales tax that was going to be available to support a swimming pool. And then, you know, when we do these things, everybody always overestimates the amount of revenue that's going to be there. The problem that really happened with that, and again, there's no bad intentions, but nobody said, let's set that, you know, a certain amount of that money aside from those increases and put them towards an aquatic project. If we had done that, and we'd thought strategically, we might have a bunch of money that you then could be adding to. You know, it could be the down payment on some things. So, and again, I'm not, I don't want anybody to take what I'm saying as throwing darts or questioning the decisions that council made. I'm just telling you that if this had been done, we'd be in a different position now. So that being said, I really looked at it and thought, in looking at general revenues, and Carol's looked at this really hard, I know, and the revenue streams, as well as all of us did, but Carol took it an extra step. So I really believe that what I'd like to see us do is make a commitment for making an aquatic project happen. And that's me as Dave Turley, one of the city council members. And I'd like first to find a way to actually start setting money aside. I mean, again, it's not going to be what a lot of people want, it's not going to be in the next two or three years, in my opinion, because the monies aren't there. But that being said, what positive steps can we take to really make this come to fruition? I'm tired of talking about it. I want to see steps happen because I really think it'll make our community a better place. Most of everybody here knows how I am towards the youth in the community, but it's more than the youth, it is the seniors, but it's really everybody. But I have a special place in my heart for our students, and I would love to see that. I wish the RE2 school district had the money that we could be working in partnership. But you know what? They don't. They're just trying to survive right now. So I would like to see us, instead of passing something like this resolution, what I'd really like to see is, is really give David and the staff a direction to, and I know they've already been working on it, to really look at the general revenues and the projections, and look at the payoff of the cop for the police station and things in 2020, and that we actually start putting money together towards this, that if the WAP could start working other financing schemes, and we actually start putting money towards this and make a commitment towards it, I think it would be, there would be a lot of goodness in that, and might actually give us an aquatic project in the future. And, let's see, there was another thought I had. Oh, and I'll stop with that. So that's just my thinking.
One thing I wanted to piggyback off of you, you mentioned the sales tax revenue is increasing. The fear I have is that if we engage in a project like this, like if we just did it today, and we're stuck with a fixed cost for the next 30 years, we can't always guarantee that that sales tax revenue is going to go up every year. We'd like it to, obviously, but yet, we're still stuck with that fixed cost expense.
But if we're starting to save, and we see if it continues, that amount that we're projecting that we might be able to put towards that could increase. The other thing, this is what I meant to say earlier, but we have to take that as a council, I think we need to work through it, in looking at all of our priorities and deciding how much we can put towards that, and really discuss amongst ourselves. I mean, we just heard all these individuals, and I do thank everybody for being here, talk about the importance of this project. So the question becomes, knowing that, you know, and looking at the other things that we've been, how much money, and we need to agree to that, do we want to set aside for that if we think that's a way to move forward? I've got to Bob?
Did you go?
No, Bob, please.
Thank you. Yes, we felt that the discussions between you and David Butterrey and Jerry were very positive. And indeed, at the last minute, Friday at noon, before the agenda went out, we tweaked this to try to reflect some of that discussion. The emphasis here was not on getting a ballot initiative, the emphasis was changed to, for one, to council to try to find the funding sources. You came up with some great ideas, we haven't gotten into the details on them because it's not appropriate this evening to go in through that.
Right.
But yes, the city can do their part, but we wanted this to be, in a sense, a commitment, as it says, for city council to look. We added the and/or for the 410 account. If we can find it all out of general funds, that's great, okay? There's no preference. But my, last year, we had a workshop on 20 September, and we were bluntly told there's no general funds, okay? So we think the circumstances have changed this year, like we said, the sales taxes have gone up, we're starting to pay off some things, and so we just wanted a roadmap for us to follow here. All we're asking for in section one, which is the meat of it, is that this, we set a goal at, just as you have just said, that we try to find solutions for the money, okay? Like I say, that's the crux of the issue, and we need city council involvement on what are the trade-offs, okay, as presented by the staff. So I would still prefer, as the council member that will make the, propose the resolution, is that we stick to this because it doesn't preclude anything that you've talked about. It doesn't preclude the staff or the council during the budget screening process, which is coming up right now, from coming up with any ideas, any reprioritization, impacts of the police officer, another one at the school, et cetera. That's all part of the process. So that's my comment.
Okay, and I do have a couple of replies to that. Section two does discuss a partial reallocation of the 410 fund, and that going to the voters.
Should.
I'm totally against that. You know, I'll just say upfront, that's a showstopper for me. The other thing I would say also is, when we talk about the city selecting a design build contractor and using general funds, for that now, I mean, everybody here needs to realize, this city has been very committed to building a swimming facility. I mean, this city council, not this one, but a city council that was sitting here over a number of years, spent about 700, more than $750,000. $750,000. a number of years, spent about 700, more than $750,000, $750,000 out of this budget in developing plans, shovel-ready plans, to build what ended up being a YMCA, and keeping in mind, something when you go through this, is that it started as a project that was about $7 million, ended up being $17 million, that was going to cost about $25 million when you consider the interest of debt. You know, this is one of the things that you have to watch. I mean, there's a lot of things you would like to have, but if you let it grow to a point that you can't afford it. So you've got to stay focused, you've got to really have the debate and the scrutiny. And so, you know, I just want everybody, all the citizens, to realize, you know, the city council has tried to work through this, but it's, a city council has, and it's important to, again, my goal now is to really look at a time in the future, say there's an aquatic project, understand the funding stream to get there, because it was just like when the WAP wanted, wanted the city council to approve $10,000 for the, what do you call it?
Business plan.
Business plan. When a city has spent $760,000 out of the amount of money that's in our budget, that's a pretty big commitment, and look where we are. And as a member of this council, I absolutely do not want to see us going down that path again. That when we spend another penny of taxpayers' dollars, I want to know that we're going to end up with something at the end, that there's, it's not 100%, but a very good probability that we're going to have this swimming pool in the ground somewhere in Woodland Park.
We totally agree. And, you know, really, all Section 2 is saying, or Section 3, is that at some point in time, you will find a concept design and pick a site.
Yeah.
Okay?
Which have to be done. Okay. And I think Carol was next, and then Eric, please.
Okay. As I sit here, I think, I'm in total agreement. We need to figure out, figure this out. It's a financial problem, and we need a dedicated revenue stream. There is not enough money in the general fund. I'm all for putting some money away. Let's put some money away. Let's put some resolution of supports together. Let's figure out how we can go out and try to find some folks that might commit some funds towards it. But I think at the end of the day, in my mind, it is going to come down to where we're going to have to get a dedicated funding stream to pay for that seven, seven and a half million, eight million dollar, whatever it is, building. That's a 30-year commitment. It's going to take three tenths, the four tenths of a percent in sales tax. Why this failed before, many reasons. Economy was terrible. Frankly, it couldn't even get the support of council. It had my support going forward, and I think, I mean, I just look at the people that turned out tonight, the letters. You know what? Great. You know what? Let's go out and campaign, and let's get it done. And I don't think, you know, three tenths of a cent sales tax, which I think is what it's going to take, to fund the building, I think we have the money in our budget to fund the shortfall in the operating revenue, because to me, that kind of falls under parks and rec and some of the things that you do as a community. So, you know, you want a commitment? I'm committed. We've got to figure out how to go get the money to build the facility. If we can do that, it's going to happen. And we're not talking to one cent sales tax. And one other thing for the record, I am not a big proponent of a big rec center, and I'll tell you why. I mean, the pool's great, the aquatic center's great, maybe there's a basketball court, racquetball's great, those types of things are super. I'm not really a big proponent of putting people that have put private capital to work and built, you know, facilities, gyms, and those types of things, putting them out of business with public dollars, or potentially putting them out of business. You know, we have a number of people in this community who have gone in and built businesses around that, and so I don't really want to see us get into the gym business. I'm all in favor of getting involved with the basketball and the racquetball and those types of things that, in community rooms, because those are the types of things that the private sector can't do. So for the record, that's where I sit on that. I realize that it cuts into your revenue, but I believe that people have made substantial, they've taken substantial steps and used their own private resources, and I don't want to see us compete with them. So that's where I sit. I'm supportive, and I like the mayor's plan, but it's going to take more than that, because five years from now, we're going to look in the bank account, and we're going to go, yeah, we got $500,000 sitting here, we're still $7 million short.
Well, just so, for the record, it would be more than $500,000, and it would also be when the debt that we have with the cops is paid off. So I mean, there is a point that I believe you could get to and fund this without raising tax. I really do. And if we're working towards that.
And you're probably correct, Mr. Mayor, there might be a point in time when that will happen, but tonight, administrative action before the council is to consider this resolution. And first off, Jerry, thank you so much for standing up there patiently while we ramble on, and thank you so much for the business plan. It really helped codify in my mind the cost of operating a very modest aquatic center, in my opinion. It's very useful, and I think we'll be able to use it from this point on. I am about to call the question, Mr. Mayor, because I believe we really do need to consider the resolution. We have a lot of discussion amongst all of us, because I think we're all on the same sheet of music. We want an aquatic center, we want to find the money, how we find the money, whether it's a tax increase or setting aside a special reserve for a future capital outlay for a building. We can discuss that in budget discussions, but right now, we need to get to this resolution.
Okay, and just so you know, procedurally, you can't call the question when there's not a motion.
Well, I'm about to make the motion, unless, Gary, please, and then I'm going to, I'm going to make the motion.
I'm all for your project. I want to see it tomorrow. I want to see it in here tomorrow. And my view is, the only way we're going to get there, your approach is great, but it's going to take longer than I would like to see. Okay? So my theory, who's been suggested to you before, is that we need to get together, maybe, if the residents want this thing, then they're going to be willing to support that 0.5%, whatever it is, sales tax increase, and I'd be willing to put something like that on the ballot and let the voters make up their mind. They're the ones ultimately have to approve this.
So what you're, just, so I understand, so what you're talking about isn't a change in the 410 Fund, you're talking about that we might want to look for a tax increase?
That's absolutely right. If you're going to, if you're going to really get this project off on the ground and get it going right away, rather than waiting five to 10 years? Because I don't think people out here want to wait five to 10 years to see an aquatic center, you know? But I'd love to make a motion, say, hey, let's, let's put it on the ballot for 0.5%. But I can't do that.
And I'm going to turn to Bob.
Yeah, I apologize for the word "should" in Section 2. It should be "if," okay? It's a very conditional. If we don't need to consider any other fund source, or if we say we don't need a ballot or municipal bonds, then we don't need to go to the voters. But on the other hand, if we say we want a tax increase, then we need to go to the voters. So this is intended to have, you know, if we need to go to voters, it's just saying, then we would go to the voters. It wasn't intended to skew it to any particular source of funds.
Well, my only point, the voters say they want this thing, back yourselves up. And some would tell you that they told you that three years ago.
They may. They may have changed their mind, too.
I have a simple question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
A logical next step is a concept design. Do you have a cost estimate for doing that, or having someone else do it?
Sure, it'd be about $40,000.
$40,000?
You have a track record. They're $750,000.
Yeah, I heard the history last year.
This is not a full-up design where you put the wires and the pipes. This is a concept.
And also, Ed, so what everybody knows, the council didn't sit, the councils at that time and say, "Let's spend $750,000 to come, you know, to spend to come up with that design." It was done over a period of time where you started, I don't have the record, so this isn't official, but you started $10,000, next thing you know, you've added 40, next thing you know, you've added more, and you add more, and you add more. Next thing you know, you've spent $760,000, you have wonderful plans, and no way to execute it. So coming up with the way to execute it is crucial, in my opinion.
And I think John makes an interesting point. You know, I would go so far, as we go through our budget discussions, that maybe we allocate some money to put forward towards a concept design. You know, that's a great step. It gets the ball rolling, it shows that we're committed, and we're actually taking some money, doing something with it, that we can continue to refine the concept so we can get better numbers. And you know, Cowar Springs, they passed, in El Paso County, the RTA, the Rural Transportation Authority, and they passed that by going through, and it's a one-cent sales tax, and they identified the exact projects they were going to do, where, you know, here's Tier A, here's Tier B, here's Tier C, and they said, "We're not going to spend a dime on anything else other than these projects, and we'll just keep moving down until we..." And you know what? They got it passed, they got it reauthorized. So, you know, having information is very powerful, and so, you know, one of the things I would consider would be, you know, let's take some of that money, put our money where our mouth is, let's go ahead and engage somebody to do a conceptual design so we can get better dollars, rather than, rather than have it just sit in the bank. Because frankly, it just sitting in the bank is not moving the ball forward.
Well, but, but I would say to that, if we see we're on a path, and again, that for me is key.
I agree.
Is a path.
I agree.
That we're going to be able to fund it, then during that time when you have money, I mean, this is going to be a living thing, that you say, "Hey, this is looking good, we're doing what we say we're going to do, let's go ahead and get the design." But I don't want to spend taxpayers' money right now on a design without having a path.
Well, there's risk in everything.
Well, and, and, again, I will look at history, and $760,000 worth.
Can't change the past.
No, but you can learn from it. Okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to move to approve the resolution with one amendment, that the resolution include only Section 1, and we strike Section 2 and Section 3.
And strike 2 and 3. Let's look at that.
And if I could make a comment, I mean, Section 1, in my mind, could just be as simple as saying that we're going, that we support, and that we're going to actually review the budget and identify a fund, you know, see if we can identify a funding stream and take out the 410 and all that sort of thing. I mean, I think it could even be more basic than, but...
So wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. So we have a motion. Please repeat the motion so that we all understand it.
My motion is to approve the Resolution 761 Series 2013 with the following amendment: strike Section 2 and Section 3, and in Section 1, delete the 410 account revenues, and simply make that the general fund account.
That'd be your motion.
Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second on that discussion.
Do we really need a resolution, or can we just agree that on our strategic and objectives planning meeting to do these kinds of things? Or do we actually need a resolution?
You know, we probably don't need it, but I think it would be good to have it.
Yeah, why not?
And we show that we're focused towards it, that we've made a, had a vote on it, and that we're moving towards that. That would be my input on that.
I would have no problem with, at this point, striking 410 and Section 2, because those decisions will come out of our discussion in Section 1, okay? But I do want to point out that it's nice to show some progress, like you've stated, like Gara's stated. We've been messing around with Memorial Park for a long time, too. This city put out $25,000 to do a master plan, a concept design for the park, okay? We're talking just a little bit money here to do a building, okay? Which is a lot more complicated, in my opinion, as a civil engineer. But again, we're not establishing any timeframe. You're saying, okay, if we put this into the 2014 budget, then we could do it then, okay? But it is important for everybody to know what the scope and cost of this project is to have a concept design, as we've acknowledged in every other project.
But I would just say, based upon Carol's motion, that that's what we're going to find out, as we scrutinize, as we look, as we analyze, it's saying that we're committed towards it. I'll say, based upon, you know, what I've heard, I could support this motion, and, you know, and I'd really, you know, I want to really hear from council. I mean, you know, in the scheme of things, I mean, that means we're going to look at the other priorities, and we're going to make decisions, but that it's really important that the council be focused, wanting, you know, wanting to have this happen, and really rolling up our sleeves and working together to try, you know, to make it happen. Not try to make it happen, to make it happen.
Does that include possibly discussions on raising the sales tax?
Absolutely.
I think we look at all of that as we, as we work through this, and I think it needs to be really high on our list of priorities as we move forward. That's my take.
I can go with that.
Any, what, any other discussion from members of council?
Let's do it.
We have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion. Any further deliberation? Then we're going to take a vote.
To be clear, Section 2 and Section 3 have been stricken, and the words "and/ or" 410 account revenues, 410 account, has been stricken from Section 1. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion then is to approve as amended. Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Absolutely.
Turley?
Yes.
Rovetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, everyone. Looking forward to a lot of energy and hard work in the, in the months to come.
And I want to summarize just a little bit. I just want to reiterate, I really do appreciate the work of the WAP, the citizens who have worked on this, both over the past couple of years and in the past. I mean, always a turbulent thing. I mean, the fact that you're hearing the city council as a group say that this is something that we want to see happen, and we're going to work to try to figure it out, is, I think, a step in a, in a good direction. Doesn't mean that it's going to happen tomorrow.
You know, sir, this is probably as far as this community's gotten, so that's, that's wonderful news.
But, but I think when we look at everything, you know, I think we can come up with a plan, and you guys, Jerry, will be a part of, as we work through this, I think. Okay, thank you very much.
So your organization's still alive, then, right? You're going to continue?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We're going to move on to Item 10C, and we're going to consider a proposal to streamline a city process. And for that, I want Suzanne, you going to speak to this? Our deputy city clerk, Suzanne Leclerc.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, the city clerk's office has been bringing to council liquor renewals and special event licenses for you guys to approve. Tonight, I'd like to make a proposal to council to consider allowing the city clerk's office to process these applications internally. The driving force behind this is customer service. Timing is a particular challenge when it comes to special event permits. State law requires an application to be submitted 30 days prior to the event. This is difficult with our current system, and sometimes 30 days is not enough time. Administrative delegation would enable us to get this done in a more timely manner. Renewals have a similar timing challenge. If the renewed state license is not in the hands of the licensee before the expiration date, wholesalers may decline to sell inventory to the business. Needless to say, this is very frustrating for the licensee who has submitted everything on time. As part of my certification recently as a city clerk, I have attended many liquor license classes. In these classes, the topic is always discussed, and I've found that many other municipalities are already doing this process. Our city attorney has reviewed this proposed process and concurs with the city clerk's office. This is what we're proposing. If we have, when we have renewals, the city clerk's office shall have the approval authority when the application meets the following criteria. So if the application, including all supporting documentation and fees, is submitted timely and complete, the license is current with the city's sales tax payments, and the renewal license has been approved by the planning department, the police department, the fire department, and the health department, there have been no prior conditions imposed by the council acting as the local licensing authority that have not been met. And then we would like the council to retain authority when there is a reason not to consider a renewal. And then, with special event permits, the city clerk's office would like to have the approval authority when the application meets the following criteria. The application, excuse me, the application, including all support documentation and The application, excuse me, the application, including all support documentation and fees, is submitted timely and complete, no objections are officially filed, and the event is non-controversial in nature. The council shall return, retain authority when there has been an objection filed, either from the public or from law enforcement. We would continue to bring to council all liquor new license, new liquor license renewed, pardon me, all new liquor licenses, we'd like to bring, if the council allows our request, this would give the clerk's office time to establish a new process, which would include a routing form that would be distributed for approval to the police department, the planning department, the fire department, the health department, and the city clerk's office. We will also begin visiting each liquor establishment annually. At that time, we will be checking to make sure that their floor plan has been submitted and has not been changed, checking that their alcohol is being stored properly, and checking that they have the correct signage posted in their establishments. This will make the liquor process a more thorough and complete process than it has been. Thank you for your time, and the city clerk's office would recommend that you approve this proposal.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Thanks so much!
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions for Suzanne? So, everybody knows, we had, you know, the packet on this, so it's not a surprise.
Can I say one?
Yes, sir.
Suzanne, great job.
Thanks, you know, thank you, Eric.
And number two, I love it when we can simplify processes.
Well, it was your recommend- Yes, it was your original recommendation that got Cindy and I thinking about it.
And I'll just add, you know, I think that's good when we do that with things that aren't controversial, and, you know, there are things that we go through, at 95% of them are, but then there's things where the council needs to be involved, but I wholeheartedly support this one.
Thank you.
Have a motion, a second, and further discussion. Here you go, and we'll take a vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Rovetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Councilor Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks, Suzanne.
Anyone in the audience that would like to comment on anything? Thanks for being here, Mayor Randolph. I asked Steve if he wanted to come up and run this meeting tonight, but he wasn't running up.
It's a real pleasure to be on this side.
For, would go into reports, I have a couple of things, I really did like that tonight. Also, just got an email, I did look, it wasn't in a public hearing, and the coach for the softball team at the high school, they had their game tonight, and they beat Mitchell 20 to nothing.
Wow.
And for those that don't know, these girls are amazing. And so, the playoffs will be starting next week, Sunday, we will know what the playoff schedule is, but they're, this team is actually, in the league, went 10 and 0, and overall 10 and 3. So, this is an amazing group, and so, just proud as heck of what they're doing. I mean, I've gone to several of the games and things, and it's just been a great experience and-
So, you're saying they're good?
These girls kick tail. So, anyway, events coming up, Saturday, October the 5th, Dance the Night Away at the U-Pass Cultural Center, and that's a Saturday from 6 to 10 p.m. to honor the sixth anniversary of the Pikes Peak Regional Medical Center opening. For info, call Barbara Berger at 264-8803. Sunday, October the 6th is the Kiwanis Benefit Concert at the Country Lodge, 2 to 6 p.m. to raise money for maternal prenatal tetanus immunization, and for info, call Don Ignatius at 237-7533. Friday, October the 11th, Taste of Teller fundraiser for Community Partnership, that's out at Shining Mountain Golf Course. Meteorologist Matt Meiser from K-R-D-O will be the master of ceremonies, and for info, Saturday, October the 12th is the Woodland Park Panther Electronics Recycling Event, that's 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at the middle school, small fee. Info, call Elizabeth Cannell at 686-2037. Tuesday, October the 15th is the Greater Woodland Park Chamber of Commerce Business After Hours, and that's gonna be a Fidelity National Title, 5:30 to 7 p.m. And I will also remind everyone that tomorrow night is, in fact, the homecoming game at the high school at 7 p.m. It looks like it'll be wonderful weather, not, but it'll be a great time, you know, a lot of people who've, you know, our residents, our kids who graduated from Woodland Park High School have come back in town for that event, so there's a lot of stuff going on. Last night was the homecoming parade down 24, wonderful event, just thousands of people out there, it was great. And thanks to, I guess I would thank both the police department and public works for all their work in making that happen, and seemed like, from my perspective, high level, it went really well. And that bonfire over the elementary school by Gateway was awesome, and I'll, there was at least a couple of thousand people over there. So, it was a really good event, and also, Saturday night's a homecoming dance, and so, everybody watch out, and be, you know, all the kids will be out there and all that. So, it's a big, been a big week, and it's just a great time in the community. Last night, I did get a picture of me and the football coach together, he had been wanting that, and so that was kinda cool, and got that out on Facebook with the mayor and the coach, so it was a good time. Eric? Gary? It was inferred tonight that perhaps we weren't doing everything that we could do to make Woodland Park a better place to be. I think that was a reference that was made by one of the presenters here. I wanna assure you, there's a lot of people on this dais over here who spend an awful lot of time in the background trying to make this place a better place to be. Give you an example, Main Street program working on, many of you don't know what that is, we'll have a presentation in the future about that, working real hard, Brian Fleer, Economic Development Director, and a bunch of other people are trying to form committees to make this possible, and it will make Woodland Park a better place. Give everybody an opportunity to be able to participate in a lot of the things we have looking forward to. So, another adventure that we're trying to create over here, too, it's a creative arts district. Many of you don't know what that is, we're working in the background to make that possible. It may take one or two years, but it provides an opportunity for the Woodland Park to be put on the map, basically, to attract people here for the creative and performing arts. So, please, we are doing something. It's not like we're up here, you know, spinning our wheels and not doing anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Thank you. First is our liaison partner, Rick. Last night, we met to go over the master plan for Memorial Park, and we're presenting on the 17th the recommendations from the board, so we'll have that for your consideration. One is with the Aquatic Center, and one's without, and so, we'll have that discussion in the near future. That happens to be item 3 of the resolution, but we'll see how that goes. But, yeah, I, back to what I wanted to say, I personally am very grateful to what we have a unanimous decision tonight on something that's very important to the community. Of course, Steve is very emotional about some things, and-
That's okay, I know Steve.
And, yeah, and I appreciate his, I mean, he is gung-ho 100%, and he always cheers me up when I'm depressed, okay? When, and what you've done is giving us hope tonight, because we put a lot of effort into this, and we just thought, if we didn't get the vote tonight, it was all down the drain, okay? So, this gives us a way forward, I think the community's delighted to, and I look forward to working through these issues.
Carol? Ken?
No.
John?
Nothing.
Okay, I do have, and one addition, the student art that's right over here, but on the wall, behind Kip and Bill, is from Caitlin I, she's in the 12th grade at the high school, and I guess at the meeting I wasn't at the last time, you probably talked about, spoke about the banner that's up here?
No, I did not.
The banner that's up there is, in fact, from Citizenship Day at Gateway Elementary that was held earlier this month. The students presented, I mean, it was a wonderful event, the high school band was there, and they recognized a lot of people that serve others and serve their communities. This one was for city officials, there was one for veterans, for military, for firefighters, for police, and it was a really, really nice event, and at the next meeting, I'll talk about what the school district's gonna be doing if they don't come, maybe they will. For Veterans Day, there's gonna be a school district-wide assembly on Veterans Day, the 11th of November, it's gonna be wonderful, and so that should be a good time. And originally, I was not, didn't think I was gonna be here for the next meeting, I've had to miss a couple, but in fact, I just changed everything today so that I'll be leaving on Friday instead of Thursday, for that's why I will be here, for what that is. And Aaron, do you have anything for us? Cindy, from the staff?
Nothing, other than the Brian's report.
Okay. Welcome, Brian Fleer.
Welcome. The marathon meeting, once again.
Hey, it's not 11 o'clock, so that's good.
And I promised to be brief, but some important things, listening to this discussion and debate tonight, a lot of discussion about sales tax, and one of the things that just really drives home for me, given, I think I'm right at a one-year anniversary being in this position, is how important sales tax is to this community. And it's, you know, and our efforts with Economic Development, combined with the chamber, which, you know, with Devon, her efforts, I think, we have a considerable focus on that very important revenue source, i.e. sales tax. And with the DDA, as I've worked through this process, we're able to leverage, through TIF, property tax, which in the future will help us generate considerable sales tax. So, that model works. I can tell you, having been in this position for the last year, it does make a difference. On the street, the brick and mortar aspect of what we can do with TIF will help drive sales tax revenue into the future. So, the discussions that you have tonight are both timely, and I think accurate, in terms of what we're trying to do in the future, you know, with whatever council decides to do relative to the important types of facilities. So, you know, and the news, I think, is good relative to what we're seeing, we're really springboarding, the things that we know, that we see, for example, WOMACs, you know, it's still somewhat unknown what those impacts will be, but we know that come January, there's gonna be 650 students that will be attending a college here in Woodland Park, and it's matriculating through, not only with housing, but they'll be spending money in our community relative, again, back to the notion of sales tax, as a commercial hub, not only for Teller County, but for other counties. So, you know, it's all important, and it just keeps, you know, just the thoughts keep driving relative to what our mission is and what our goals are, relative to both DDA and Economic Development. General updates, Woodland Station, we're really buttoning down for the year. You'll see considerable activity, particularly along Center Street, Saddle Club Drive, Park. We're chasing the frost, I mean, even though, you know, it just seems like we came out of summer, within six weeks, we're gonna have considerable weather conditions. So, it's looking very good, we're on course with Woodland Hardware to get that buttoned down, curb gutter, sidewalk, and final pavement for both our Center Street, Saddle Club, and the parking area of Woodland Hardware. So, again, that's all coming together nicely. Amerit Gas site had a closing official, the word, I got the email from Arden Weatherford, Amerit Gas tank's supposed to be gone October 8th, keep our fingers crossed, it looks like that should happen. We are working with their development team on Lot 2 now with NES, we've retained NES to do a kind of a build-out proposal that we will be presenting to council, probably in the month of November, with NES to show you, and I realize there's been a lot of data capture on Woodland Station on engineering and design, but we wanna bring a concept out and forward, we'll be presenting it to the DDA at the November 5th meeting, and then, again, sometime in November, I'd like to present that to council on what we envision for the build-out of Woodland Station, including some surrounding properties. It's important to have that roadmap, because not only does it help sell the real estate of Woodland Station, it helps us plan, now that we have a development team in place for Lot 2. Many of you know Kip Unruh, who's part of that development team with Arden Weatherford, also Steve Randolph, and others, we will be, there'll be a concerted effort. In fact, that particular development team is contributing to the design concept, so there's already a team in place as we look forward to that. Trail Ridge Apartments, the DDA is going to sponsor groundbreaking, we had a construction, pre-construction conference here last Wednesday, we're excited about seeing that project come out of the ground, we'll have an invitation to those folks that'll be at the groundbreaking, including Seawood Development, that will be in the month of October, and you'll be getting some information about that here shortly. Within the DDA boundary activity, we have considerable activity with, still with Paradise Lodge, moving forward with their due diligence tractor supplies and the pipeline for improvement, the Senex, so all of these, again, you know, thinking about the conversation of the eating relative to sales tax. The Willows, I need to report that they did not receive their tax credits in this cycle, although after every appointment of tax credits, they, there were 30 applications, six of which were approved, three of those in southern Colorado, including Durango, Delta, and Lahana. Every one of those received their credits in their second application. So, in the debriefing with CHAF, they said if we were the next, we would've been in the next six, they love Woodland Park, they want Troy Gladwell, the development team, to resubmit. There's a few things we need to tweak relative to the pro forma, but they're very bullish on Woodland Park, and they like the project, so the develop, Troy Gladwell, the developer, will be resubmitting March 1st for those tax credits. It's, anything to do with the funding of affordable housing is never easy, and we're just thrilled that we got high accolades, and I'll be at a conference in Vail next week with, meeting with CHAF, Colorado Division of Housing, and hopefully USDA reps if they're, if they're not furloughed, but we'll hopefully meet with those folks next week and have further conversations about this project and others. Main Street, Gary mentioned Main Street, we're continuing the organizational element of that, we hope to have a community assessment that will be conducted by Downtown Colorado Inc. and DOLA in the month of November, so that's an ongoing activity. And then, finally, just an economic development activity with Off-Road Vehicle, local county commissioners, as well as Douglas County Commissioners, have been successful in supporting a connection between our local Trail 717, I think, southern Colorado, and Rainbow Falls, and also supporting upcoming ice racing for Rainbow Lakes sponsored by Big D Motorsports. It's another one of those sort of transparent economic drivers that, I mean, we see the trailers coming in with the motorcycles and ATV, but it is a multimillion-dollar activity that's right in our backyard, and there's a lot of political support, and staff support, and private sector support overall relative to that. Finally, unlike Congress, the DDA recommended a balanced budget to the city manager, which he'll present to city council. So, I'm happy to say that our revenue streams looked robust for the DDA district, they went up approximately 3.75%, and we, working with our finance director, Kelly Case, we were able to present the report, and then receive an approved budget from our DDA board that will articulate to, again, through the manager and council. And, again, we're, I'm thrilled about that, and, again, we see a very favorable future, not only for the DDA, but the city in 2014. We'll have a very strong year, by all projections. May I answer any questions or anything from council?
Since the Willows project is not approved this month by CHAF, what is the cycle? Is that like a one-year delay, or is it another opportunity?
What they have, John, is that there's actually, I think, two rounds every year for CHAF, and the first round in 2014 is, we have to submit a letter of intent February 1st, and then our, the application goes in March 1st, and that's what the developer intends on doing. He's extended the real estate contract with the landowner, and they're moving, they're moving ahead. This is not unusual, and I'm familiar with tax rates across the country, they're administered through state housing agencies, it is a very popular program, very competitive. We're just thrilled by the counter report that we received here last Wednesday, and that's why the developer's gonna move forward in the second round.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
One last thing, just a caution for everybody, I was at Rampart Lake yesterday, and the guy told me, the guard told me, "It's the last day, gonna be open because of the shutdown of the government, so don't go up there unless you wanna walk the road", which you can still do. A lot of national forest things are closed, including the road to Maroon Vales. Since I drove there on Tuesday for pictures- Does that include Pikes Peak, too? No, that's, Cowherd Springs runs that. Well, the road- Yeah, but no, it's operated by Cowherd Springs. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, council.
Thanks, council.